With a roll call, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines.
Here.
Councilmember Brandau.
Here.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Here.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Vice President Soria. Council President Olivier.
I'm here. At this time, we'll have an invocation by Pastor Zach Dera from FIRM Fresno Interdenominational Refugee Ministry, after which time, we will pledge allegiance to the flag. If you would all please stand.
Good morning. Please pray with me. Lord God, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for this city and for the many blessings that you've poured out upon it. Lord God, we thank you for these leaders that you have brought to our city. God, we lift them up to you today. Your word tells us that if any of us lacks wisdom, that we should ask you and that you give generously to us without finding fault. Lord God, I ask for wisdom and we ask for wisdom for our leaders. As they make decisions today and every day, Lord, we pray that your wisdom would guide them along their path. Lord, we also pray a rich blessing upon them. As they have given their lives to serving this community and this city, Lord, it reminds us of you and your heart of serving your people. So God, we pray a blessing upon them. Lord, we pray also that you would give them peace, that you would give this city peace in the midst of times that seem so polarizing. God, may we find unity in a desire to see that this city is full of justice and righteousness and love and peace and hope. Lord, we pray for those during this Christmas season especially, God, who may not have, who may not maybe have the same blessings as others. Lord, we pray that you would give us hearts. We pray that you would give these leaders' hearts to serve those that are in need. Lord, we also pray for our neighbors here in the state. God, as our state just has so many fires going on, we pray for them during this time, during this season. We can't imagine the heartbreak, the tragedy, and the challenges that are ahead for these families as they lose their homes and as they have to flee their homes during this Christmas season. We pray for our firemen and our firewomen who are out there fighting the flames, serving others. We pray that you would give them strength and courage. We pray that you would keep them safe. And Lord, we pray that you would bring down rain, that you would bring some way to stop these fires. God, I pray for these leaders as we begin this meeting. Lord, that they would lean not on their own understanding, but that they would lean on your guidance. Lord, we also pray for them as they do serve this city that you would give them time to be with their families and loved ones, that you would allow them to be present with them during this season and to get rest so that they can be ready for all that you have ahead. Lord, we also pray for our mayor. We pray that you would give him wisdom as well. We pray that you would give him great foresight to think about each and every person here in the city of Fresno. We pray your rich blessing upon this city as we continue to seek the goodwill and the peace of this city. Thank you for loving us so much, God, and may we think of hope, love, joy, and peace during this Christmas season. Pray all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Zach, thank you for the good work that you do in your ministry at FIRM. They're doing great things in District 7. All right, this time, we'll approve the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to today's agenda?
Yes, we have one add-on proclamation for Angel McCurn for the third quarter award winner for Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board. Councilmember Chavez sponsors this item. File ID 17-1522, the 10 o'clock number three item will be continued to January 11th at 10:00 a.m. For the 1:30 p.m. item, the staff and mayor's office would like to have the order to be 3E first, 3D second, and then the 1:30 p.m. third. That's how they would like to hear the items.
Okay. That won't be a problem. Any councilmembers have any changes to the agenda? Okay, the screen is clear. The chair will invite a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the agenda? Item carries unanimously. We move now to ceremonial presentations, and the first one is the presentation of the SPCA Pet of the Month, and Councilmember Capriolio will be presenting.
Well, good morning, everyone, and good morning to you. Now, we have, look at this. This is amazing. He even has whiskers. Did you notice that? Wow. Oh, I'm getting into the dog here and forgetting my duties here. So, welcome you on behalf of the City Council to our meeting today, and you guys always do such a great job. And we've got to get a home for this little critter, don't we? And can you tell us a little bit more about SPCA and what we're doing?
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. So, this is little Sasha. She came to us a few months ago. She's about four months old now. She originally came in with mange, so she was losing hair, had a mite to the skin. We've already treated her, so she's all healthy and ready to go and get adopted. We do have an adoption special this month. It started on Black Friday as part of Home for the Holidays, where all dogs and cats are only $49, and that still includes all their services. They will still be spray neutered, microchip licensed, vaccinated, everything that they really need. So, basically, we fundraised for this month where it still costs us $180 to do the adoption. However, through the fund, the customer only pays $49, and then the other fund is taken care of, you know, from the donations that we received throughout the year. So, that's how we're able to lower it to $49. But again, the animals will have everything that they need. And so, again, little Sasha, she's probably like a terrier, like blend, again, about four months old. She had other siblings. They've already got adopted. So, she's the last one left. If you're interested in her or any other animals, please feel free to check out the animals in person or on our website. Yes, you guys are welcome to call us. It's 233 SPCA or just go to Central California SPCA on the website or on our Facebook as well.
Fantastic. Thank you. Let's make this little puppy happy with a home sometime this week if we could. It'd be a great, I wouldn't say stocking stuffer, but it'd be great to have this little critter under the tree for some warm, wonderful family.
And then also, if, we also recommend an adoption certificate. So, if you would like your family member to choose the animal, which that would actually be the best option, is bring them down to the shelter. We can issue an adoption certificate. So, take advantage of this really low-cost adoption special.
Well, can't beat that. That's the old festive Christmas spirit. So, thank you for being here, all the great things you do for our community. And Sasha, you're going to find a home before it's over, no doubt. Thank you so much.
Now, it will be a presentation to the Make a Difference Day sponsors and volunteers, presented by City Councilmember Steve Brandau.
All right. Cool. So, there's no volume? It's just photos, right, Robert? All right, thank you, Robert. So, good morning, everybody. Today is one of my favorite days of the year. We get to recognize a lot of people who really help us, my district, put on probably the premier event that we get involved in on an annual basis, and it's called Make a Difference Day. And it varies from, it's always a weekend in October. Normally, it's in early October. This year, we ran really close to Halloween. So, you'll see some of the kids playing soccer are dressed up in their Halloween costumes. So, what we do is we have a soccer-based event at Chichanci Ball Park, and we invite kids from all types of soccer leagues around town, Fresno, Clovis, anywhere where there are soccer leagues that want to participate, we invite them. I think the kids are from three to seven years old, so they're pretty young, and they have a great time. We invite all of their families and friends to come join us. And it's, I think, the third year that my district's done it by ourselves. Then we overlapped one year with Councilman Longjong, who's no longer on council. But, and Councilman Jong had also done this event for about four years before we got involved. So, I think this year was our ninth annual. I might have to go back and look on the math. It might be eighth, but it's eighth or ninth annual year that this event has been held. And so, when Councilman Jong left office, I took it over from him. And so, I've got a couple more years, and I'm dedicated to see it happen a couple more years. And then we need another councilmember probably to take it over when I'm gone. But in October, we invite all of these kids down to Chichanci Field, and we allow them to play their normal league game. It's always on a Saturday. They play their normal league game against an opponent, and then we give them medals. And somebody asked me, "Brandau, you're a conservative. Do you give them all medals or just the winner?" We give them all medals. Okay, Kyle? And so, everybody gets a medal, then we take a team photo, and then we feed them. And we have lunch provided for them and all kinds of other goodies and snacks and juices. And so, we put together a wonderful lunch, and it's open to everybody that's in the stadium that day, not just for the kids playing, but for their grandparents and their parents and their brothers and sisters. And so, my role, none of this could be possible without our sponsors and our volunteers. My role, to be very transparent, is very minimal. I show up in the morning. Everything's already dialed in. My chief of staff, Lindsay Barsamian, has been helping me do this for years. And she was there this year. She had to sit in a chair the whole time because she was very, very pregnant. And since Make a Difference Day, as a matter of fact, just last week, she had her baby. So, she's probably watching this on cable, and so, congratulations, Lindsay. But Robert and Maxwell from my office were also involved and ran a great show this year. So, I show up. Things are already in motion. Our Fresno police officers have already got their barbecue fired up. We start serving lunch about 10:30 in the morning for the teams that finish the early morning games. I want to just run through our list of sponsors. We had a breakfast this morning in the other room, and I recognize our sponsors, and I'm going to bring them back up at the end. But here's a complete list of our sponsors for this event. Ari Martinez is an individual, and he sponsors the event. We love that. We also have Life Bridge Community Church was a new sponsor this year. Fresno City Women's Soccer, and we're going to bring them up in just a minute. The Fresno Police Officers Association has been with us forever, as they are in many other events in the city of Fresno. We always appreciate them. Fresno Coin Gallery, Spencer Enterprises, Community Food Bank, Andy Souza. We're going to bring him up in just a minute. They deliver pallets of food for this event. It's thousands of people that we serve, and we couldn't do it without Community Food Bank. Fresno Unified School District, the Fresno Football Club, Caglia Environmental, Republic Services, also with us forever, PG&E, also with us forever, Pepsi and Granville Homes. So, can we give all of those sponsors a hand? All right, thank you. And we're going to bring the ones that could make it this morning. You'll see some of them in a minute. We want to give a special recognition this morning for the volunteers also, okay? Because they, in their own way, give every bit as much as the sponsors. They come out. It's a long day. And let me tell you, by the time you run up and down that stadium five times, you're thinking, "Why am I here again today?" But it's really valuable what our sponsors do. They help run the actual games. They guard the field so that we just can't let anybody on the field, only kids that are playing soccer and their coaches. So, they maintain all the gates of the field. They help us with registration. They help us serve lunch. They pass around bottled waters to people in the stands. They do all kinds of stuff. I'm probably only scratching the surface of all the things that our volunteers do. And so, of course, not all of our volunteers could be here today, as could not all of our sponsors. But I want to recognize the volunteers that are here, and most of the volunteers that could show up today are from Fresno City Women's Championship Soccer Team, right? Yeah, let's give them a hand. Right? And so, it's great that they're, A, Rich, thank you. We just mentioned you. Rich Caglia, also one of our sponsors. And so, not only are they supporting their own favorite sport, and I was teasing them in the other room. We might have, one of these three-year-olds might grow up to be, play on their team, might definitely be another soccer star in the city of Fresno. But they're not just supporting their own sport. They're supporting the city of Fresno. And a great event to encourage young kids to do positive activities in our community, and that's one of the reasons for this overall event. So, I'm going to call up the names of those that are here today, and if you come up, I'm going to have, I'm going to, what's that? Okay, Robert's going to hand you a certificate, and then we'll take a group photo up here. So, Lucy Cummings, come on up, Lucy. Michaela Peña. Ruby Campa. Mariana, oh, no, Mariana. I don't know. Yeah. All right. How do you say your last name? Osagata. Perfect, okay. Elvira Hernandez. Cassandra Romero. Jasmine Garabey. Tori Coles. Maddie Fisher. Kaylee Lemon. All right, Kaylee, you were clapping every time, and now we called you. Marissa, okay, how do you say, Marissa Galarte? Huh? Oh, she's here. Cool, cool. And Kalia, are you Kalia? And is that the way you say your name? That's a beautiful name. All right. And there are also some other team members who couldn't be here today. And there are also, I know Kevin Foster had several volunteers from his church who couldn't make it today. A lot of folks are working, so we do appreciate the ones that could come down. They're out of order. All right. Let's just call a name and... Let's call a name, Robert. No. Nope. Looks like we've got the stack of those that aren't here. Yeah, there you go. Kaylee? Yes? Yep, she is. Nope. No. Just Kalia? Is everybody got their certificate except for Kalia? All right, cool. All right. If you ladies could join me over here. Robert's going to grab Kalia's. We're going to stand right here in the middle. And Jasmine, you're the head of this motley crew, aren't you? All right. So, Jasmine, so you guys are champions. We're going to bring you back in a week or two to talk about that too, okay? So, we don't want to overdo it, but what did you feel about coming out and volunteering with your team for Make a Difference Day?
I feel like we're great role models to the younger children, especially the girls, because they can see that with a little bit of support that they can get far. And I just feel like they look up to us, so it's a good thing to be there for the children.
Oh, I agree. Don't you agree? Let's give this team a hand. All right, thank you. And then, really quickly, if our sponsors, who we recognize at our breakfast this morning, could come forward, all of you sponsors that were here this morning, and Rich, come on. And so... Just, yeah, let's do sponsors on this side, and then we'll have our volunteers here. Hey, how's it going, Matt? Kevin? All right. We might have to get our sponsors to huddle up, kind of like our volunteers have done. All right, all right. So, okay, let's show those certificates. There you go. And we'll take a quick group photo. I'm not blocking. Am I blocking you, Ann? Okay, let's do one more. All right, thank you. Well, thank you, everybody. We appreciate you. We couldn't do it without you. Thank you. Thank you, Ann. All right. Hey, we've got breakfast in there. Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Will. Kevin, thank you.
Our next ceremonial proclamation will be by District 5, Councilmember Luis Chavez.
Good morning. Oh, you didn't wait till I called you up? Come on, Blake. So, this morning, we were going to honor Angel McCurn with the Fresno Regional Workforce, but he couldn't make it. He's got a great excuse, though. He actually went up and is working right now, which is, in a second, you'll find out why that's so important. But I just wanted to highlight a couple of things about the program. And as I was reading his story, I was just really inspired, because that's a perfect example of what our city needs right now. So, this is the third quarter, an award that's presented through the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board. Mr. McCurn was recognized as an individual who demonstrated a commitment to making changes in his lives or overcoming barriers. And a little bit of story on him, he was actually employed as a seasonal worker, transporter. He knew that in about three months, he was going to be looking for work again. And that's when the regional workforce stepped in through an ERS, which is an employment readiness specialist. And they enrolled him in the constructions, bear with me, the Construction Trades Multi-Craft Pre-Aprentice Training Program in January of this year. Now, here's the part that's really inspirational. In the midst of this training program, Mr. McCurn fell on hard times. He no longer had transportation, and he was homeless. And in spite of those circumstances, he was determined to finish the training through the Workforce Connection provided support services, and he was able to complete the remainder of the program. He started and completed some union courses in sheet metal, plumbing, cementing, painting, and ironwork. And in March of this year, he successfully completed the training program and received certifications in OSHA 10, forklift, and CPR. So, by July, he began working as a union apprentice with the Cement Masons, earning $22 an hour with benefits. And so, we're just really proud of the work he's accomplished. And I know, Blake, you have a little bit more background. I think we have a video to show on some of his accomplishments.
Yes, thank you, Councilman, and Mr. McCurn wishes he could be here, but he's happy to be working, and we're happy that he's one of our trainees who's working, and we have a great video where he can tell you himself.
My name is Angel McCurn, and I live in the city of Fresno. I am currently working at Buchanan High School with California Commercial Pools, and my job title is Cement Mason Apprentice. My career goal is to, for right now, is to further into the, finish my program, become a journeyman. And then hopefully, I, well, not hopefully, but I want to go ahead and branch out into becoming a Cement Mason Inspector. As a Cement Mason Apprentice, I'm in my first period, so the main thing I do is clean up the work site and make sure that everything's out of the way so that nobody can get hurt. Amongst other things that I do, clearing off the forms, which are the borders that you have the concrete. You say you have a border here and a border here. The concrete's in the middle. The forms on the outside are two-by-fours or two-by-sixes, depending on the job and how much concrete and how long you're going to do it. I clean the forms, make sure that the forms are clear of any concrete and the stakes are clear from any concrete. I knock down the forms, make sure that, when I do knock down the forms, I do it in a certain way so that it doesn't break the concrete that we just pour. I grade, which is flattening out the land to a certain level that it has to be, usually between six and seven inches.
Well, Angel McCurn came to us with a very limited work history. He had been doing seasonal work for a couple years. He joined our pre-apprentice program, completed, and ended up getting, entered into the Cement Masons Union.
I was working up north for a flower company. Really wasn't, you know, jobs that you would go ahead and go further in.
Some of the barriers that Angel encountered during our training process and job readiness process was transportation issues, stable living conditions. We provided him with bus tokens, a bus pass, actually, to get to training. As far as some of his other soft skills that he needed to work on, we helped him polish up a new resume. We helped Angel develop some interview skills.
Workforce Connection has helped me by just giving me the tools that I need as far as like the learning and the training for a wide selection of different types of trades. What I learned most about myself is that I could continue to keep going forward, no matter what the obstacle. Workforce Connection definitely is the place to go, the place to get your skills. And, you know, if you go through everything that they require of you, it's more of a, they scratch your back, you scratch their back. You know what I'm saying? You do what you have to do, and you'll end up winning, like me. I appreciate it, man. Thank you for everything, bro.
Stay in contact.
Absolutely. I got your number, man, you know? Nice to meet you. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Workforce. They don't know what it is. What a great story. I think he's got management written all over him. He knew the details of that job. So, we still want to read the proclamation for Mr. McCurn. It is a great distinction and pride that we joined the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board in honoring and congratulating him for being recognized as a third-quarter outstanding achievement award winner. All your hard work and dedication in achieving your certification and training in the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board's Construction Trades Multi-Craft Pre-Aprentice Training Program is a testament, you need an acronym for that, is a testament, demonstrated your commitment and dedication to making changes in your life to achieve professional success. As you celebrate today with your family and friends, please add our personal congratulations. So, on behalf of the city of Fresno, Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council, we do hereby proclaim today, December 7, 2017, to be Angel McCurn Day in the city of Fresno.
I'll make sure that Mr. McCurn gets us. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. We now move to the approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, I hear a motion from Member Soria. Okay, Member Capriolio, you second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the minutes? Item carries seven to zero. We now move to Councilmember Reports and Comments. Member Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. A few things to let everyone know that's happened in the last few weeks since our last meeting. And we have a quick slideshow that we'd like to show everyone. And this is regarding our first annual Operation Gobble Gobble. And we want to thank the generous support of the business community, individuals. We were able to provide 350, 350 total, complete Thanksgiving dinners. We had so many volunteers. I was hoping to get like a dozen volunteers. We had 42 people show up. We had so many people that were so anxious to have a complete dinner on Thanksgiving that they would not normally have. So, there's so many people to thank. I'm not going to thank them all now. We're going to do that more formally at a later meeting. But it was quite an event. It was very, very moving. People were crying. We also shared some of these meals with other facilities. And I wanted to read one little paragraph. I got a letter of appreciation from Valley Resource Center. Says, "A recipient began to cry when she saw her family consultant arrive at her home with the donated items. The recipient said that her husband, that her H-I-S-S income had been cut because her husband was getting too much from disability. Now, they were barely making it." Quote, "She said, 'The Lord bless you for all you have done for us,' as the tears ran down her face." So, it was quite a, we were hoping to get 50 turkeys, and all of a sudden, you could see on the screen what happened. So, I can't thank everyone enough. So I can't thank everyone enough, especially my Chief of Staff, Laura Rios, Juan, Jean, Jesus, and Pete. It was magnificent. It was so much fun. We had so many donated. I had seven pallets of food. And I could go on and on about it. But next year, we're going for 500, so I want to encourage everyone to participate and help out. You'll never have a warmer feeling than when you see what happens when you give back to that community, our community. And this was at Eldorado Park. The same week, we had the Valley Industrial Partnership for Cooperative Education, easier to say VIP. And that's through the Lyles College of Engineering at Fresno State. And they had their Shining Star Awards for outstanding engineers. So the people that illustrated their leadership, character, and dedication were honored at that event. It was held at the Mexican consulate. It was really fantastic. Next, we had a participating night. It's called the Safety Walk Night near Fresno State. That's on Sierra Madre Avenue. Again, thanks Public Works for repaving that street. So with the mayor, Dr. Castro, we were able to identify further needs in that area. So I want to thank the mayor, the administration, Public Works for all their help. Likewise, at Fresno State, November 30, we presented a proclamation to Tom Yeribys. He's our Communications Director. He'd been there for nearly 30 years, unbelievable commitment to our university. So we wish him the best as he enters his retirement days of his life. I don't think he's ever going to leave the university. He's such a great guy. On a personal note, my family had the honor to celebrate with many other families the unveiling of a new group of veteran names on the beautiful Walk of Honor at the VA Hospital. So my brother was there, is there forever. United States Marine Corps, Vietnam veteran. My father, United States Navy, World War II veteran. And it was, if you ever get a chance to see it, it's amazing. It really is. So the last thing I wanted to say was, you know, today, many people, I think, have forgotten what today is. And today is Pearl Harbor Day in our country. And I'd like to honor all the veterans who made that ultimate sacrifice on that infamous day at Pearl Harbor in Hawaii. And so with that in mind, I'd like to request that we adjourn the meeting in honor of all the veterans who paid that ultimate sacrifice on that day, December 7. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of reporting items. I just want to congratulate again the Fresno City College Ram Pantry for their grant opening this past Friday. As we know, hunger is an issue on many college campuses. And so we are just grateful that the college president and staff has been very supportive. They have been inspired, I think, by what has happened at Fresno State and really how they built up the student cupboard and the pantry there. And so I'm glad that this is happening also at Fresno City College. Then I also want to remind folks that we are doing our fifth annual toy drive, which is taking place through December 11. We have a toy drop-off box here at City Hall and also throughout District 1 and various businesses who are partnering with us to collect toys. These toys, over 700 toys, will go to benefit underserved kids at Heaton Elementary. So we're very excited about that. Tonight, we have our annual reception where we will also be collecting toys at the painted table. And then lastly, I just had an inquiry for our administration, just because this came to my attention recently. So we know that the census is happening in 2020, right? And there is a deadline coming up shortly. I just checked online, and the city of Fresno hasn't registered. So I was wondering if we are preparing to register for what they're called the LUCA Program. It's the Local Update of Census Addresses. I think the deadline's the 15.
We are. And we have a point person in Durham, Dan Zach, is leading that process. And we have a team of folks. And he, I just sent him a note yesterday reminding him of that deadline.
Okay, perfect. Because I was getting a little freaked out. I checked online this morning. I'm like, the city of Fresno isn't registered. I know Clovis and surrounding cities are. We just, I think, just for the public's knowledge, this is a very important process. This is the way that we assure accuracy, and this is how we draw dollars from the federal government. So it's a very, very important process, and I'm encouraged to see that we are moving forward. I think the deadline is coming up shortly. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to thank several people regarding the Remember the Fallen Memorial that we had downstairs. I want to thank Bruce Rudd for getting a multitude of people to help set it up, because it would have taken, seemed like, days without those folks, as well as to bring it down. It was a very meaningful memorial, and I think it affected a lot of people. So thank you, Bruce, and thanks to all the staff that came out and helped with that.
You know, Council President, I forgot to mention one thing, and that is Christmas has arrived at Fresno's airport. I would encourage everyone to stop by there, visit the beautiful decorations, the gingerbread houses. And for the first time ever, I see Kevin right there and his team, the airport has trees decorated outside the airport along with music. So it's a great way for departing passengers to leave our community and be a part of that. And as those that are arriving, it's magnificent. You got to stop by. It's really fantastic. So thank you, guys, for that. And you did a great job. It was a wonderful event, and the airport's amazing. So we keep it going. Thank you, guys.
Capriolio. We move now to the consent calendar. Are there any councilmembers who wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Speak now.
Council President, I'm not going to remove any items, but on item 1E and 1F, I would just like to publicly recognize Ann Cluse, who is also just here with PG&E, is my appointment to the Enterprise Capital Projects Oversight Board. We're reappointing Ann. And then we're also reappointing Anthony Molina to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address any item that's contained on our consent calendar? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, return to City Council. The screen is clear. We have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any opposition? Consent calendar passes, seven to zero. Thank you, Council and staff. It was a light day for you. We move now to, let's do general, General Administration, item 3A, Department of Public Utilities. Here with a change order.
Good morning. Mike Garbaha, Department of Public Utilities. Just a quick update. The southeast surface water treatment facility is a thousand calendar-day construction contract. It's being built by local contractor WM Lyles. That project is more than 75% complete, and we are on schedule and on budget today. So Change Order 12 helps support our ability to maintain schedule and budget. Change Order 12 is to the construction contract WM Lyles and incorporates security system improvements for the treatment facility as well as the Kings River Pipeline Diversion Facility. The security system improvements were originally intended to be procured separately by the Department of Public Utilities. Three firms were pre-qualified in 2016. During April 2017, those three firms submitted bids, and upon evaluation by the purchasing manager as well as the city attorney's office, all three of those bids were determined to be non-responsive, and the bids were subsequently rejected by City Council on June 8 of 2017. So to maintain the completion schedule and minimize costs, Project staff have asked WM Lyles for a proposal to provide installation of the security improvements. Lyles provided a lump sum price of $990,191 with no increase to the contract time. This price is comparable to the lowest bid of $981,100 received from Honeywell Building Solutions during the prior bid advertisement. So we're looking at a cost difference of about $10,000 from the lowest bid that was rejected and the lump sum proposal that was submitted by WM Lyles. This work was included in the construction budget for the project, so the change order will not have an impact on project contingency funds. Change Order 12 was presented to the Capital Project Oversight Board on November 6, 2017, and the board supported the change and recommends approval to the City Council. This concludes my presentation. It'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address item 3A? Please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment, return to Council. The screen is clear. The chair will entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve. I'll go ahead and second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to this item? Passes three, excuse me, it passes seven to zero. Moving now to item 3B, awarding a requirements contract. This is also Department of Public Utilities.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council. My name is Brian Spinder. I'm the Assistant Public Utilities Director for Water and Wastewater, the Department of Public Utilities. For this agenda item, staff is requesting City Council award a requirements contract in the amount of $571,371 to Calgon Carbon Corporation for delivery, installation, removal, and destruction or regeneration of granular activated carbon, or GAC, and authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a one-year contract with provisions for two one-year extensions. The Department of Public Utilities Water Division routinely uses granular activated carbon for treatment of drinking water wells and surface water treatment facilities. Executing a requirements contract with one supplier establishes a firm price for a specific period of time. Granular activated carbon treatment is necessary for affected wells to remain in compliance with drinking water standards, and funding for this contract is included in the FY 2018 Water Enterprise Fund operating budget. The division operates 23 treatment sites, which treats 25 wells contaminated with pesticides. In addition, there are 12 granulated, granular activated carbon treatment sites and 26 non-treatment sites impacted with 123 TCP, which could require either additional granular activated carbon vessels on existing sites or construction of new granular activated carbon treatment at non-treatment sites. The majority of the contaminated wells are in southeast Fresno, and the operation is critical to meeting water demand in the area. A notice inviting bids was widely distributed. The lowest responsive bidder was Calgon Carbon, which submitted a bid of $975,065.04. The specifications require bidders to include pricing for several options, allowing the city to choose the best method of delivery and installation to the treatment sites. This concludes staff presentation. Available for comment.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address item 3B? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, return to Council. The screen is clear. The chair will entertain a motion to approve this item. We have a motion by Member Capriolio. I will go ahead and second. I think we're united in our opposition to granular activated carbon. No, this is a bigger, a big deal. And so you're going to get a 7-0 watch. Is there any opposition? There you go. In fact, I was, are the people out there with the rally against granular activated carbon today? Just burn it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item 3C now. This is also Department of Public Utilities, Mr. Schuber.
Good morning, Council. Jerry Schuber, Department of Public Utilities. The item before you today is a follow-up on the workshop that I presented to you on the illegal dumping issue back in council on November 2 of this year. As you're all aware, Solid Waste Management Division, using the recently introduced Fresco application, has been able to track the amounts of illegal dumping, which has occurred throughout the city. The calls for service have risen sharply over the last three years, which has made it apparent the fines and penalties for enforcement actions related to illegal dumping were in need of an increase. Additional resources for enforcement, including impoundment of vehicles used in the commission of a crime, penalties, the stiffer penalties up to and including jail time, and the use of the city attorney's office's support for the epidemic also incorporates into the revised codes. Staff has sought input from other departments, including the city attorney's office, code enforcement division, public, or the police department, and the CMO. Staff recommends approval of the amended section and is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, return to Council. We have a few councilmembers punched up for this one. Member Brandow.
Hey, Jerry, thanks. Thanks for bringing this back to us today.
Absolutely, sir.
I was out in Highway City last week looking for some possible CDBG opportunities, Kelly, as we talked about. And while I was there, I saw a couple of couches and love seats that had been dumped illegally. And so I know that community doesn't appreciate it. And so it happens all over town, and I'm glad to participate in making the fines stiffer and would also look forward to the day we add even more cameras to that.
Absolutely.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Member Soria, then Member Bretafeld.
I have a couple of questions. And I know that we had some exchange via email earlier, I think yesterday or the day before. Just wanted to know in terms of stats, so I understand illegal dumping is a huge issue. I see it all the time throughout District 1. We report it all the time. When I'm driving, I report it in. I know you guys get calls from us, and so I appreciate the work. I'm just curious how effective it's going to be to increase fines. Can you tell me right now the percentage of the fines that are actually collected in terms of enforcement? That's what I'm concerned about. I get that we want to deter folks from dumping, and so maybe, you know, doubling the fines is going to scare some people or deter some people. But what are those numbers? Because I think I read somewhere, I think, I don't know if it was the Fresno Bee or something, there was a percentage out there.
Yeah, we've updated all of the reports, actually at your request last night. I worked with code enforcement. They went through their numbers, and they were able to find that we have actually collected at this point. Now it's 85% of those fines.
Okay, 85%.
Yeah, it's dramatically different. There was a piece in there that we didn't have before, and that is the tax return piece.
The which one?
So when someone illegally dumps, and they're able to identify the person, give them a citation, and get a social security number along with that individual, then they can put that on their taxes as well. So if they get a tax return, that fine gets paid to the city before they get their return. So there's an element I didn't have before, and that number jumped dramatically.
Okay, great. And I'm glad that you guys are correcting that, because I think the Fresno Bee had reported 38% of the fines were only collected.
Yeah, they, their number was lower.
And so the number is obviously very different.
Right now, we have collected $89,690.
Okay.
Yeah.
Please, please. So you saw me sneak in minutes ago and provide Jerry with the updated numbers. So we have had our accountants working double time since last night trying to get this information. And we were just kind of whispering as he came up here, and I want to just make some clarifications on what I had given him to report. So we have collected, issued 188 citations, which equates to a little over $100,000 in citations. The first column that I may have miscommunicated to him is how much has been paid. So about 33% has been paid. So that's $35,000 has been paid as of November 30, I believe. This is just through, we just ran the numbers through November. At the state for collection and income tax returns is another $47,000. So that is estimated to come in. That's a very good way to collect money. So that is...
So that will be next year?
So that will be this, the next few months, right? So as, yeah, December. So yeah, the next half year, probably.
And so we anticipate collecting those...
Another $47,000. And that will put us up, and we have another, another small amount in collections. And so that will put us at the 85% that Mr. Schuber had reported. So... So, sorry, I thought I heard my name. So I just wanted to clarify some of those numbers. They are hot off the press. Like I said, we had Olga working double time and getting this information overnight and early this morning, so I wanted to be really clear on the breakdown of those numbers, if that helps.
And I have a question related. In our breakfast, I was speaking with Officer Will McCarty, and he actually has gone out on many of these collections and of disposed items, and he kind of made it clear to me. So, and I want to clarify it here. So many of these illegal dumpings are simply people from apartment complex or adjacent apartment complex dragging a couch out into the alleyway. It's really illegal dumping even then, but they think that they're, they think it's the right thing to do. So I was talking earlier of somebody driving in a pickup truck and dumping, dumping couches out on a street or on a cul-de-sac or something. So my question is, the fines that, a lot, and he said, a lot of these times, we don't know who does it. But, so I'm assuming that you're talking about the times that we do know it, which is gonna be, we're gonna see greater instances of knowing who the violator is with the new camera process that we're using. So we're gonna start catching more people, because we're gonna have cameras, and so I think it is valuable to...
We actually added four cameras to the code enforcement team, so they have four additional cameras now.
Right.
We also added language to the code that allows for towing of vehicles. There are additional pieces of this, so...
Right.
We can even activate the city attorney's office to penalize them criminally. So there's, there's pieces of this that aren't, that weren't available before.
Right.
They're just new tools in the toolbox.
Yeah.
Ultimately, what we're trying to do is change the culture of illegal dumping is okay.
Totally, and I agree. So to people hearing this, they might, it might seem like we're not catching as many people or getting as many people fined, but we're really tightening that up with the whole process of the cameras, and so I think increasing the fines, from my opinion, Council Member Soria, you might, I'm not sure, but I think it's, I think we're gonna see great, greater impact from this program going forward.
I believe so with the additional cameras. I think we're gonna have, we're gonna have more to report.
Just a couple more questions. So the increase in fines will cover the actual cost of the work that is happening. Right now, the existing fines don't cover the cost of going in and out and cleaning up and using the services?
The actual cleanup is a charge on top of that. The fines are a penalty.
Okay. So we do already have...
We do charge for, when we do a service and we clean it up, we have vendors, we can tap to do the cleanup and then charge that bill back to the...
So this is just the penalty after, after the cleanup? Okay. And so you guys feel confident that this will help you guys, the increase in the fines will help you guys deter?
I believe it's a step in the right direction to stop this.
And then lastly, I think you guys added a provision to impound cars. Would that happen in the first instance, or is this like multiple, you know, happenings?
Cars can be impounded in the, in the provision of a, if someone is in the criminal act, they can be impounded, and this is a piece that has been existing in the, in the law. We're just, we're reiterating it so that we can, we can actually do that. It'll be a...
What do you mean? It is...
It's already, a car can be impounded in the act of a illegal, illegal dumping, commission of any crime.
Okay.
So this is a crime, right? So what we will be able to do is then make a determination at the scene. That'll be up to the code enforcement officer and the police department as to whether or not they determine if that vehicle needs to be impounded.
Okay.
And there's always been that, that availability to them. We're just stiffening the fines and the penalties to it. So now we can tow a vehicle. We're telling people, we will tow your vehicle, or we can tow your vehicle, and we'll see, that'll be dependent on the inspector and the police department. Solid waste is not writing citations. This is a code change, so the code has more tools.
And, great. Okay, thank you for that information. And I know, I will just comment, I know that you guys do a great deal of work to try to prevent this by providing the sidewalk, you know, on the street...
We do the operation clean up.
Operation cleanup and provide other opportunities for folks to, so I commend those efforts, you know, that you guys are trying to do to combat this and provide, you know, a source for some of those folks that don't have a place to dump, to get rid of some of this, these things. So I appreciate the work that you guys are doing.
We're working on other resources as well currently to try to help. We've got the alley maintenance program where we're working in the alleys, and we eventually will hope to come back to this council with a convenience center. So a place for people who can, they can dump legally, but those items are still in the works, and we're working with our outside consultant on that right now.
What's the timeframe for that?
Well, it really will come down to CUPs and how fast we can process it and then build it. So I would say that we won't see anything until probably mid-next year, maybe the end of next year. Because we have to go through the CUP process, we have to make sure that everyone has been noticed of where it's going. There's, there's a, it's a process, so...
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Just before we recognize, Councilmember Bretafeld, Member Soria, you know, I'm the only council member to actually engage and arrest, confront an illegal dumper personally. And it's a tough experience. And no, all kidding aside, they're tough to catch unless, and I, when I caught him, I turned the corner, and there he was, dumping illegally. And so that's when I engaged, but the reality is, they are tough to catch. And so that's why the cameras are gonna be good, because...
Yes, they are.
One of the things that my neighbors call out for in District 7 is cameras to monitor locations that are notorious for illegal dumping, and so I think that's gonna be good. So I'm more than happy to support. Thank you for... You know what? It was, I had to decide whether or not to engage. It was dangerous, but I live on the edge, and so I was, I did it, I did it for my constituents.
You suggest Councilman Capriolio?
I think you should go out and...
And you're on.
Well, at the time, I was, actually, Member Bretafeld, you're up next, and then you and I can go fight crime together.
Question for you. These cameras, can you, I mean, obviously, I don't want you to reveal where you're putting them, but how many are there generally? Where, where do they go?
The code enforcement division had three up until just recently, when we purchased another four for them. They are placed in places where we see hotspots in the Fresco app. Those are areas where we have been alerted to illegal dumping in those areas through Fresco, and we try to run everything through Fresco so that we can actually source these, this material and these cameras in the areas where we see the biggest, biggest exposure.
Are they typically in alleys behind apartments?
No, no, they're not. They can be, but they're typically not.
Where typically are...
Well, without giving them away.
Right, right.
Because code puts them, I don't, I don't see where they put them, but I give them the, you know, kind of the look at where the hotspots are. They're normally in streets that are near freeways, places where you can go in and out and get out quick. We do have alley dumping that we have to deal with, but you have to be able to tap a power source to be able to put the camera up.
Right.
And that's where the alley becomes a little bit of a trick, because getting, getting the camera in a place where it's not so obvious can be harder than it is on the street.
Okay, I'm all for it, and I think Kelly alluded to something about income tax. Are you putting liens on tax returns or income? I mean, I'm just wondering what, what that was, what she was referring to.
So, Councilmember, we do, we work with the state, and we do that so that when they get an income tax return, it is deducted from that return. And we, liens typically are on properties, like traditional code enforcement is a property lien. These are very unique in that these are for individuals, and as the other council members have alluded to, proving this and getting a social, social security number is the only way we are able to do that tax return thing. And so there's quite a bit of partnering with the Fresno Police Department in these investigative matters, just to get to that point.
Excellent. And on the impounding cars, have you impounded any cars yet?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
And I would have to, because again, we don't, we're not doing the enforcement piece of this, I'd have to get with the inspector to see if anything has been impounded, but to my knowledge, I don't believe...
So what would be, do you have a procedure in place to impound the car? Because I don't think there can be anything more significant or dramatic than to take someone's car who's doing this. And to me, at what, at what point do we do that? Is it the first time, the second time, the third time? I think that needs to be defined. You have it here, and it's a, it's a tool, but I'd like to see that tool used. I'd like to see people who are dumping have their cars taken, and when you send that message out, I think people who are considering dumping, they gotta decide whether they want to have wheels anymore.
That would require a follow-up that I don't have the answer to right now, sir.
Well, can we, can we get that? Can we work on a specific plan for impounding people's cars and not make it the last one, but bring it up to the front so we can really send a message that we take the cleanliness of our city and our community very seriously? That we're not just kind of saying, hey, we may impound your car, but that we will impound your car. If we catch you, we will impound your car. But we have to have the criteria for the impounding of the car. I think we need to get that to the council to be approved. And again, I'd like to see it on the front end of things rather than the back end of things, so we can really send a very strong message. Because we haven't impounded cars yet, but I think we should impound cars with people who are dumping stuff all over, all over the city.
We'll bring it back to you, sir.
Great. Appreciate it, and I appreciate all the work. This is exactly what we need to be doing, and you're doing great work to, to make a difference, because we've got to stop all the dumping that goes on in the city. And impounding cars is a, is a real significant tool. Thanks.
You're welcome, sir.
Member Capriolio?
I can, but I'm close.
Thank you. Whoa. I hope you're able to hear about Operation Gobble. I don't know that you were. You did hear of Gobble, thank you.
Yeah, I heard Gobble.
That's critical mass for all of us. But, hey, listen, congratulations. I know you've been working on this a long time, and from what I understand, you can confiscate that vehicle in the first offense.
We can, but I, I don't know that how, how many have been done or a policy has been written.
Well, you know, the past is the past, but for the future purposes, if you have the opportunity, grab it, because those things spread through that community very quickly, how serious we are about this. And I would encourage you to enforce each and every phase of this, especially the fine collection. And if you need more power, let me know. We can up the fines, we can do a lot more. I think there's, that power that we have to exert is what's gonna keep our city clean and make it cleaner as time passes. So please, come back with anything you need to keep this going, with recycle centers being eliminated, camping, now dumping. We're on, we're on a roll here, so let's keep it going.
I'll remember that when we're coming back with the convenience centers, because that's gonna be the next stage. It really is.
Excellent. Yeah, I appreciate it. So thank you, guys, for everything you do, and can't, can't encourage you enough to keep going, and we're behind you 1,000%.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Chavez?
I had a quick question with regards to the, the cameras, Jerry. So are they gonna, how easy will these be to remove and set up elsewhere?
They, they require us to get Public Works to come out, bring them down, put them back up. So the team that works with code enforcement actually coordinates with the folks in Public Works. The gentleman who'll go and replace lights and do the repairs on the top of the lights, they, they will come out, take one down, and put it somewhere else. And typically, they have to do it after hours or in a time when people aren't really paying attention. Even when they know they're there, they still dump, though.
Right.
So it's a, it's a culture shift.
Well, and, and that's kind of where, where I'm getting at.
So what would be the criteria for placing cameras in a particular, I mean, you obviously know where the hotspots are at, and where people are just habitually dumping, and they're going back and back. What would be the criteria for placing a camera there? Is it 10 calls per month? Is it 15? Is there something?
I don't, I don't know that we have a tipping point for a location. It really comes down to how often we're there and, and what the angles are that they can mount a pole and actually get a good photo so that we can actually prosecute. Because there are places where placing a camera can become very tricky in getting pictures. So the team over at code enforcement works, like I said, directly with PD and Public Works to make sure they get the best angles possible, and I kind of leave that in their hands. They have access now to our Fresco data.
Okay.
So they can see everything we can see. Su Fang, our supervisor over in Solid Waste, has actually trained the individual working in code to be able to open up Fresco and look at where the hotspots are as well. So they can get real-time stuff instead of waiting for us to print a report for them.
Well, and the reason I'm asking too is, a couple of months ago, myself, our office, along with some community-based organizations, as you recall, we cleaned up some alleys in southeast, and I mean, like, literally like a week or two, these folks just come right back and they dump their, their garbage. And, and I think that's, it's correct with what was mentioned by my colleague, that it's usually folks that have rental homes that clean them up and then go and dump them in the back. And, and along with those cameras, do you think we could get maybe like some signs in the entrance of the alleyway that says, hey, no dumping, or something to alert them that there are cameras there?
Providing illegal dumping signs is something we can always have a discussion about.
Okay.
It's not something that we fund currently, but I'm sure between us and Public Works and code enforcement, this is a team effort. We could probably get it done.
Because I think that that would be helpful, like if folks knew.
I know we've placed them in the alleys where we've had repeat problems, so it's not impossible. We can, we can get anything done. We just need to know where it is.
Awesome. Thank you.
Absolutely, sir.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yes, I was thinking about the council making a policy that after the second offense, we make the direction to impound the car. It seems to me the first time somebody doesn't know that what they're doing is really wrong, they get fined, although I think most people know when they're dumping a stove or a couch or something in a street or an alley that it's the wrong thing to do. But I think we need to put some teeth in this. So for me, I understand a judge would ultimately make the decision, but as a policy, I think the council ought, ought to set a policy and say for the second incident of this, not only will it be a fine of $1,500, but the direction is to impound the car. And with that, I'd like to make that as a motion.
So we have a motion already. Want to add that to the motion?
Was there already a motion to approve? So you're asking to add that to the main motion?
Yes, sir.
I was, and Paul, you want to aggressively impound the cars?
Councilmember Bretafeld, may I ask for a clarification?
Yes.
When, you, you may be surprised to hear this, but in some instances, we will have a camera roll at the end of the day where we will catch somebody doing it repeatedly during the day. So we have instances where we have cited an individual one, two, and three times in one day in one action. And so I would just like for the clarification for intention in your motion, whether or not, assuming that it will make its way through this process, make sure that you're aware of that, that in some instances, it may be the same day where somebody is having a second occurrence.
Well, I mean, I guess the council can decide whether they want to make that a separate infraction or not. But I think we all have talked here about this is a real priority, and it is for all of us. So I'm open to ideas. When somebody's dumping second, third, fourth, fifth time, for me personally, I have no problem pursuing impounding their car.
I think the concern is that they don't know that they're getting the first citation because they've done it two or three times in one day. We show up, we give them the first and second citation and throw their car.
So if they've done that six, two, three, four dumpings that day, is that one, would you cite them as one infraction, or how would that work for you?
We cite them, the first $500, the second $1,000. So they get, like, for instance, they would get a $1,500 citation for both the first and the second offense.
Yeah.
So we are aggressive in our citation process.
Even though it was one day?
Correct. So I just wanted to make you aware that that actually happens more often than you may assume. But yes, we are aggressive in our citation, and we do cite them progressively as our ordinance outlines.
Well, I'd be curious what, what the council feels about that. I mean, I'm open to making that where you would pursue that, or you'd wait for a second day for somebody to, to do that.
Council, if I could jump in? The empowerment only applies when there are misdemeanor prosecutions, not the several penalties. Under state law, the judge can impose an empowerment if you've had a prior conviction for the same thing. So, upon the second conviction of a misdemeanor with Superior Court, then the judge can order empowerment.
Okay, but we can set as a policy that that's the direction the city would like to go?
You can direct the city attorney's office to pursue empowerment upon the second conviction.
Okay. And that's what the motion is. Now, they raise an important point. You know, people are dumping multiple times in one day. Would that, would you wanna go after impounding their car if they've done that, or would you wanna wait for a second different day violation? I mean, I think that's the question for the council.
I think, councilmember?
Yep.
Sounds like we should probably come back with that aspect of it, because there's some good questions in there. And Fresno PD hasn't got a chance to weigh in this morning. City managers are down there talking about it. But I'm very supportive of it, by the way.
Okay.
But I think we should tackle it the right way after you've had some offline discussions. If you think you're okay with that?
I am absolutely fine with that.
You can bring it back next week, if you want.
Can that come back next week?
You can put it on the agenda.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
You can put it on the agenda.
Okay, then we'll put it on the agenda, well, for discussion. I'm not sure where, are you gonna have enough time to meet with PD, city manager? What's your feeling on this?
Councilmember, just to follow with, if I might?
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I would say that, I think that there's probably, could be some general support for what you like to do, if we wanna beef up enforcement action, particularly if our code enforcement department supports it. I think there are a couple of things that you probably wanna hash out, and don't, I don't think you got a rush to do it.
Yeah.
I think you could take a little bit of time and get with our code enforcement division, the city attorney's office, as well as the police department, and bring back a pretty thoughtful piece of policy.
Okay.
And, I mean, I think we're generally supportive, but just wanna see it done right.
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll set up the meetings, and then we'll bring something back that everyone's had some input on.
Yeah, no, I like that. I like that. Do you want to?
Good morning, council. I couldn't help myself, I was working in the back. I was listening to-
Of course.
I know, I was listening to the debate and the discussion, and of course, we appreciate the support of the items coming forward to the council today. As a general policy, until which time that we come back, I think what I'm hearing from the council is a desire for us to approach this in a manner, and as you pointed out, councilmember Brettafield, if someone does this and didn't really understand or appreciate the full magnitude of their actions, once they receive a citation, they should certainly get the message. But if they insist on doing it again after they receive their first citation, I think what I'm hearing from the council is that, okay, you now know, and you now know better. So, therefore, I think what staff would appreciate that until which time, and I would recommend that until which time, that a formal policy is brought back to the council, that at a minimum, once a second citation is issued, I mean, you may have done it four times in one day, you'll get one citation for that. But once that citation has been issued on the second one, that your car will be impounded.
Second citation on a different day?
Yes.
Because you get the mo.
Right. It's kinda like, and so, if that is the consensus, we can work under that direction, that guidance, until which time a formal policy is actually adopted by the council.
Okay, I appreciate that. And if you could have my office participate in that discussion with you?
We certainly will.
We'd greatly appreciate it, and like to bring it back when we've got a thoughtful policy in place.
But in the meantime, that will be how staff will be proceeding.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff.
So, Bruce, this is interesting. So, you already, you believe in this with impounding the vehicle on the second violation as long as that's on a separate day? So, if a camera catches somebody dumping three times in one day, it's quite possible we go back and catch them, and they never, they can claim, "I never knew it was this big of a deal." I think that's horrible, but you're saying that on the second violation of a separate day? Okay.
I know of situations in which we have picked up an individual two or three times, and as I've shared with you in the past, we've gone, knocked on their door, and all it wasn't me, looks like you, looks like your car, looks like your truck, oh. So, that's my point, is that if they think that they wanna go out and do this a second time after we've knocked on the door and we've issued the citation, then we would impound their vehicle.
So, you-
Because we would tell them at that time, "You do this again, we will impound your vehicle."
So, you're supportive of that? And then, you don't see a problem with PD in any of those?
I don't think that would be a problem with the police department. If there is, we will get back to you. But in my discussions with the police department, it is always an option, as Mr. Schuber pointed out. It is a criminal action, and that is a tool, but having some general guidance as to how that's gonna be applied would be helpful for them. But if there is an issue, we will get back to you.
Okay, well, with you coming in and weighing in, that starts to take care of the conversations that I thought maybe we needed to have. Wilma, and you feel the same way, or?
Yeah, I agree with Bruce. We'll develop a program, we'll work with you all, and yeah, I agree with Bruce. That's why I wanted him to come up and give us two cents.
All right, well, in that case, to my colleagues, I'm ready to amend the motion to include that today. It would, if, Councilman Capriolio, unless you feel like you need to hear more, they've kind of, we've almost kind of had the discussion now, so.
Right. You know, with your amended motion, I'd be happy to second your amended motion.
All right, so, Councilmember Brettafield, I mean, we're having that conversation after all.
So, we're gonna include it on the sec-
Yeah, so, I'll amend my motion to include that, if council-
I'll second that. What is your motion, Steve?
Well, my motion was to increase the fines. That's what we came in to talk about, but it's kind of expanded a little bit with your conversation. So, today, Jerry was presenting to increase fines.
Right.
And then, we also talked about impounding the vehicle.
So, your motion was to increase, to support what's presented before us, and I've made a motion to make impounding the car on the second violation?
And you asked us if we would amend our motion, and we just now-
To include that?
Huh?
To include that?
To include that, yeah.
And you're saying yes?
Well, yeah, because-
So, I don't understand that, just procedurally, is it my motion, or is it Councilman Brandow's motion?
There are two ways to amend the main motion. One is to ask for a friendly amendment, which I took this to be, and the maker of the motion agreed to incorporate that into the motion. If the maker of the motion refuses the friendly amendment, you can make a motion to amend and have that voted on prior to voting on the main motion. Since the main motion has incorporated what you wanted into the main motion, that's not necessary.
Okay.
So, now, the main motion includes what Councilmember Brettafield raised.
Yeah. Which is, on the second violation, on a separate day, our direction is to impound the vehicle on the separate, on the second violation.
Yes.
The folks know better by that point. They've already been, they've already gotten a warning, they've already gotten a citation. Now, it's their second time. They know better, they cannot claim ignorance any longer, and so that my motion would now include that.
And council, to be clear on the empowerment, the empowerment is allowed under state law, and only when there's a violation of state law on the second conviction in Superior Court, so these have to be serious violations, the judge has the authority to order the empowerment. At this point, it would be the DA's office prosecuting those offenses, but we will ask the DA to potentially deputize our prosecutor to prosecute the state offenses too.
Can I, can I just, you know, I'm gonna just say this, I'm sorry to jump in, but I'm not gonna support this done this way, just so you guys know. Generally, I could be supportive of this, but this is bad public policy, the way that we're doing it. I think that the city attorney has raised some issues. I think that our staff has said, allow them the opportunity to come back. I think that we were on the right track when we said we were gonna bring back a thoughtful piece of policy, and now we're back to this. I'm not gonna support it being done this way. So, you know, I think that there's a way to do this and it be done right, and I don't even think we need to rush it. So, I think we should let our staff come back to us and let us understand how to do this, instead of jamming this down their throat today. So, just so you all know, generally, I can support this, but I'm not gonna support it being done this way.
And actually, I will agree with my council colleague, I was gonna make those same comments. I support, I think, the initial proposal, what is in front of us. I believe that we're going in the right direction and trying to combat and really deter the illegal dumping, and I think that we could save this and come back. If we have a better thoughtful, I like to hear, you know, I just asked the, our city attorney, it's a due process issue, we can't just be, you know, go out and impound people's cars without process. Not saying that I'm opposed to it, I just would like to be a little bit more thoughtful as we consider this policy in moving forward, so I won't be able to support the motion to amend.
I've got a quick question. Councilmember Brandow, are you willing to amend your motion so that, to give direction to staff to do what you described, but have the conversation first with the district attorney, with the police department, to vet these issues? Or do you just wanna go straight for the policy now?
Well, a lot of the, so, you know, I heard what Doug said, but, you know, say our officer is out there engaging somebody, and they've got a pickup truck, and it comes up on their screen that they've done, that they've committed this crime before, sometimes the officer will know that. And does that officer now has direction from city council to impound the vehicle? Now, then, there's other opportunities when it's the judge that will make the call, but-
So, what happens if there's an illegal dumper, and he has more than one vehicle? Does the citation count per person, or does it count per vehicle? Because the vehicle's gonna get caught on camera, right? I mean, those are just the questions that I wanna kind of vet out and hash out to that?
Sure.
I just wanna, because, Councilmember Chavez is bringing up a good point, but to manage council's expectations, what the city attorney just really very clearly explained to us is that this is not a violation of state law. This is a violation of a municipal code. So, even in your scenario, Steve, that you guys teased out, an officer, even if he pulled over a person that knew was an illegal dumper, that doesn't give him the right to impound that car. That's not a violation of state law necessarily. Am I understanding that right, Doug?
It could be a violation of state law, but for this type of offense, the officer does not have the authority either under state or our local code to, on the spot, impound a vehicle.
And that's what I just wanna manage everybody's expectations, which is why we should, we should understand what we're giving staff direction to do, and I don't think we're there yet. It's not gonna be that easy that somebody sees an illegal dumper, and the police officer's gonna be able to take their car right there on the spot. It's not exactly that way. So, again, back to my original point, and I appreciate you raising even better points, Councilmember Chavez, I just think we need to understand what we're giving staff direction to do and understand what we should expect in return, so that when we're asking questions next time about a report, we're not mad because everybody's car wasn't impounded. So, anyhow.
Right. So, Councilmember Brettafield, let me ask you this. You've heard some of the conversation up here. We could either vote on it today, or you could go investigate these questions and come back.
Let me ask Bruce a question, because I think that's what convinced you, and let's see, in light of what you've heard here, Bruce, it sounded to me like you met with the police department, it sounds like you have a good handle on this situation. You know, I think we've been ready to move forward to give some policy direction on the second violation of a different day, that we would move as a direction to impound a car. Now, I know this goes before a judge, that's not gonna change, it goes before a judge, whether we wait or we vote on this today. So, with that in mind-
Again, what I was hearing is that, first, what I was hearing is, well, is it gonna be the first time, second time? Is it one car? If it's, which car? Which vehicle? Be the vehicle involved in the commitment of the violation? So, we wouldn't go, it's like a DUI, you don't go get somebody else's other car, you impound the car that's involved in the DUI. We've heard from our officers, especially the officers who are currently being funded out of a DPU, who are assigned to address this issue, that they are frustrated with the fact they're constantly citing the same individuals over and over again. We will, and what I was suggesting or recommending is that until we come back with a comprehensive policy, that we will sit down with the police department to find out what is within our parameters. But it's a council's expectation, if it is permissible and legal to impound a vehicle after the second citation has been issued, then we will go forward and do that, as long as it is within the parameters of the police department's ability to do so. But they have confided in, with me, as we'll tell you, that one of the frustrations is the fact that they keep citing folks over and over and over again. And therefore, if it is a tool that can be used, we would use it only after the second citation was issued. Now, if it's not legal, then we'll come back and tell you that.
Okay, so, let's, in light of that, let's hold that off. Let's have our meetings, and let's bring back something that everyone is fully aware and cognizant of, what we can do. So, we'll hold off that part of it and come back to the council with something that is well-understood by everybody.
Councilmember Brettafield, so are you withdrawing your amendment to the motion?
Yeah, we'll just, I will, and it'll just be Councilmember Brandow's motion to approve.
Perfect.
And then, we'll come back later with the whole issue of the impounding of cars.
Great.
Okay.
So, do you have any other comments?
No. We'll just go back to the original motion of increasing the fines, which is what the staff recommended.
And then, the second was by Councilmember Capriolio, correct? Perfect. Seeing that the screen is clear, are there, I think we already went out to the, did we go to the public already? Yes. Right. So, any opposition? So, the motion passes 7-0. So, we'll go with item 3D, a resolution to amending the Reserve Management Act?
Or did I skip one?
Councilmember? That was moved to this afternoon.
Oh, okay, perfect.
3D and 3E for this afternoon.
Okay, so, thank you for reminding me. So, now, we go to item 3F, to approve the award of a cooperative purchase agreement to Ruxstel Sales of Fresno for the purchase of two Peterbilt rear-loading refuse trucks.
Morning, Council President, councilmembers. Jim Shad with the Department of Transportation. The next three items are routine budgeted purchases, replacing the equipment that's passed its useful life. So, the first one is to approve the award of a cooperative purchase agreement to Ruxstel Sales of California to purchase two Peterbilt rear-loading refuse trucks. These are trucks used for, or by our Operation Cleanup folks to remove the refuse and take it and dispose of it. The cost of those is $606,000 even, and if you have questions regarding that, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. So, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Oh, I don't have a quorum. There we go. Now, we have a quorum. Okay, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any councilmembers wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one punched up, is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none, the motion passes 4-0 with councilmember, or Council President Olivier being absent, Councilmember Brandow, and Councilmember Capriolo absent. Now, we'll go to our 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock hearing.
Good morning, City Council. I'm Andrew Benelli, Assistant Director of Public Works. I'm here today with a public hearing for a residential subdivision on the northeast corner of Polk and Olive in Council District 3. This is an annexation to Community Facilities District Number 11. This is for Lennar Homes, they're building 102 residential lots. This is an amended, an amendment to an annexation that was done in the past. The amended amount per home is $591 per year. We've received the ballots, and staff is recommending approval.
Perfect. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any councilmembers wish to ask any questions? Councilmember Baines?
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Motion by Councilmember Baines, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition to this item? Seeing none, it passes 5-0 with Council President Olivier and Councilmember Brandow absent. Next, we'll go to the next hearing, the next 10 a.m. hearing.
Thank you, Andrew Benelli, again, Public Works. I would like to read into the record a change on the title for this report. If you notice in the title, it states that the location is on the corner of North Fowler and East Hamilton. I'd like to read into the record that the location is on Church Avenue, east of Chestnut, in Council District 5. This is also an annexation to Community Facilities District Number 11. This is also an annexation to Community Facilities District Number 11, again, an amendment. This is a project with 112 homes being constructed by D.R. Horton. The cost per home will be $583 per year. We have received approval from all the landowners and staff is recommending approval of this after a public hearing.
Great. So we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this hearing? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any councilmembers have any questions or comments?
No. Motion approved.
Councilmember Chavez makes a motion. Councilmember Brettafeld seconds it. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes 5-0 with Council President Olivier absent and Councilmember Brandow absent. Next, we will go to the 10, 10:05 hearing.
Department of Public Utilities?
Yes, this is a continued public hearing to approve items related to the granting of a non-exclusive rolloff franchise for rolloff collection services. Three items requested here that continue the hearing in accordance with Fresno City Council Charter 13, Section 1301, Bill Number B-59, introduction for adoption, which was on 10/26, and then authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute an agreement for non-exclusive franchise rolloff collection services with the City of Fresno.
Perfect. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this hearing? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any questions?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilmember Brettafeld, second by Councilmember Baines. Any opposition to this item? Seeing none, the item passes 5-0 with Councilmember Chavez and Council President Olivier absent. We have the 10-10 hearing by Public Works, by the Public Works Department.
Good morning, Councilmembers, staff. My name is Jason Cammott, Chief Surveyor, Public Works Department, Division of Engineering. Today, I'm here to ask council to open a required public hearing for a vacation of a portion of Carnegie Avenue between Union Pacific Railroad and Bullard Avenue. The hearing date was set by Resolution of Intent 1118-D, approved by consent on November 9th, 2017. It has been properly published and noticed to the public in accordance with the Streets and Highways Code. The vacation is being requested by the City of Fresno Public Works Department. The request is being, it's being requested as a part of the Veterans Boulevard Grade Separation Project in coordination with the high-speed rail construction. The grade Carnegie Avenue crossing will be closed due to that construction and a proposed crossing for Veterans Boulevard just to the north at that grade separation will be that crossing now, after that. There's a public utility easement being reserved over that portion being vacated to accommodate the existing and proposed utilities for that area. And at this time, I ask council to open a public hearing. I'll be available for questions.
So we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this hearing? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any comments or questions? So no one has punched up. We'll go ahead. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Councilmember Brandow, second by Councilmember Baines. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes 5-0 with Councilmember Chavez and Council President Olivier absent. Now we'll move on to item 3G, the Department of Transportation.
Jim Shad with the Department of Transportation. Again, this item is to request approval for the award of a purchased contract to Quinn Company to purchase a new paver for our Public Works Department. This is the piece of equipment that is used, one of the key pieces of equipment that's used by our Street Maintenance Division to resurface our roads. The cost of the equipment is $528,175, or, excuse me, $528,175. The equipment that it's replacing is about 19 years old and well beyond its useful life. So this is a very important piece of equipment to the Public Works Department. I'll open it up to questions if there are questions.
Great. We'll go out to the public to see if there's any questions on this item. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any questions or comments?
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilmember Brettafeld, second. I do have just one question. How often do we replace these, this equipment?
We would like to replace them every 10 years. We typically keep them longer than that, primarily due to funding, lack of funding, to be more specific. But our goal is every 10 years. We have two of these pieces of equipment. One, we keep the newest one as a backup. So we're disposing of one that's 19 years old and the other one is probably in the 10-year-old age timeframe as well.
So we have two in the city?
Yes.
And one is also kind of coming up, due?
Yes.
Do we anticipate, I know that the city will be receiving SB1 dollars. Will that help our budget to be able to replace some of these?
That is a question that perhaps Scott could answer.
I think that's going to be repealed.
Good morning, Council. Scott Moser, Public Works Director. Yes, I mean, any funding transportation-related that's eligible for maintenance, whether that be SB1, Measure C, gas tax, would help with replacing equipment. And as Jim Shad mentioned, this one that we use heavily today, it's 12 years old. Actually, it was a 2004 model and it has experienced some breakdowns. And, you know, when we're out there doing that, when we have a breakdown, that's $3,000 an hour worth of cost of dealing with that and inconvenience to the public. So really, it's cost-effective, makes sense, and yes, SB1 dollars would help with equipment.
And I bring that up because I think that this is a great opportunity to highlight the benefits of the gas tax. I know that folks, you know, some folks don't support it, but every, I think every council meeting that we have, we're always saying, we need to pave more of our streets, we need to fix the potholes, and we know that we don't have enough dollars in our, in our existing budget to be able to do that. And then hearing that we have to replace some of our equipment, which is very old, 10 years, 19, and then the cost of it when there's a breakdown. So I think that it's perfect to highlight these dollars that the City of Fresno will be benefiting from so that we can put those taxpayer dollars out to work in our community to really pave our streets and fix our aging infrastructure. Thank you for providing that information. So with that, there's a motion, and there's, there was a motion made by Councilmember Brettafeld, a second made by Councilmember Baines. Any opposition to this measure? Seeing none, the item passes 7-0. Thank you. Now, Council President, you want to take over? Is three, we're at 3H?
Thank you. Yeah, we may as well go ahead and finish. Wait, 3, 3H?
3H?
We're at 3H.
Isn't that 3R?
3H.
Okay, let's go ahead and do 3H, please.
Once again, pretty routine replacements. We're asking to, for council to approve 11 side-loading refuse trucks. These are the ones used for residential collection. We're asking to enter into a cooperative purchase agreement with Ruxstal Sales of Fresno, California, in the amount of $3,973,500.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll return to council and close public comment. No one has punched up. Okay, we have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the item? A motion carries 7 to 0. Item 3I now?
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Item 3I, Public Works Department, 34th Amendment to the AAR. Mr. Moser?
Good morning. Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers. This item typically comes before the council each year. By nature, it is a re-budget, meaning there are no new projects in this item. At $4.6 million, this represents about 3% of our total budget. And those, why you see those come forward into the next year is either, for example, grants that we have, for example, through Caltrans. Sometimes we anticipate that those will come in and be done. Sometimes those are postponed to the following fiscal year. Or as we just talked about, the paver, we did have a pretty serious equipment breakdown earlier in the spring. On top of that, in the very wet winter, some of our paving work has rolled into this year. So with that, there is work throughout the city within the re-budget in all districts, and we would ask council to approve that in order that the projects can move forward. And we have our staff team available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. The screen is clear. The chair will entertain a motion to approve. Motion from Member Capriolo. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a question, quick question. Kind of along the lines that I was asking about SB1. Does this item include any projected SB1 dollars?
This item does not because, again, this is a re-budget of dollars from the last fiscal year '17, and we did not have any SB1 in '17. This only deals with dollars from last year. Within our budget, however, existing budget for fiscal year '18, we do have $3 million of SB1 revenue projected, that, because this year's the startup of that program. We do have a number of projects that the council approved, I believe, October 19th for this fiscal year on SB1.
Perfect. And when will those projects get up and running?
We have some concrete projects that are already started this, this late fall and through the winter, and then the paving projects would be happening in the spring.
Perfect. So we're already putting those dollars to work that have been approved by the state.
Yes, we are. The state provided provisions to start even spending some of those dollars before receipt. So some of the small-dollar concrete projects are already happening this winter.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, correct? No, I think the motion was by Gary and the second was by Member, okay, the motion was by Member Capriolo and the second was by Member Brettafeld. Sounds great. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the item? Okay. A motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you, staff. Now we can go back to our timed items. Why don't we do unscheduled communication at this time? Is there any member of the community who wishes to address the city council on any item that's not contained on the agenda? So please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we will close unscheduled communication at this time. We have some timed items, do we not?
I think the only remaining timed item was the 10/20 scheduled communication. Ms. Coria, but I don't see her here.
Okay, we have a scheduled appearance, going once, going twice. Okay, we'll close the 10/20 item. The constituent did not show up. So we've run through the agenda. I guess that leaves only closed session and then the 130 item. So we'll go ahead and head into closed session at this time. City Attorney?
Counsel, we have two related matters, City versus Hernandez, code enforcement cases. So I assume we will then not be coming back out until 130?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Act. And for that, we will turn it over to our administration, Mayor Lee Brand.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers. God, I've been working on other items, so. This is an amendment to the Reserve Management Act that is part of a larger strategy I've brought to council before about making Fresno one of the premier cities as far as financial management and having the resources to pay for all the core services that we need. So what this does, it takes windfalls that come occasionally, like from insurance settlements, one-time asset sales, like selling the lot on, by the convention center, and puts them in a reserve fund that accumulates during the year. And by the end, by next fiscal year, when the budget comes up, I would make a presentation to the council within the budget itself, and it basically converts one-time funds into a funding stream based on a minimum five years and a maximum of 10 years. So let's say we sold an asset and got $10 million in the fund. And this fund will vary from almost nothing in certain years to more substantial figures based on what we're doing. So we could name a project, like we're going to fund public safety communications equipment at $1 million a year over 10 years, and that would be put in the budget to vote on by the council. But the purpose is, normally when these monies come in, like one-time windfalls or asset sales, this council spends the money. It's carved up very fast, like a turkey. So this is an effort to, again, use our resources, tie it in directly to the Asset Management Act I wrote a few years ago, and make the city a little better and having a little more money available to cover what the council would ultimately deem as the improving public core services. So this is an amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Brand. This time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. I have a card for Eric Payne. Is this the item that you wanted to address? The Reserve Management Act? Okay, I'll hang on to it then. Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment, return to council. The screen is clear. We'll entertain a motion to approve. There is a motion, and we have a second. Member Brettafeld.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So how much is in, I don't know if you want staff to answer this, Lee? How much is in the fund currently? Or, yeah?
Mike, you can answer that question.
Good afternoon, Councilmember. There is no money in this fund right now. It has not been set up. We are waiting for the council vote to establish this reserve, so there's nothing in it at the present time.
What about, well, you've had this before, this reserve account before, right? We're just doing an amendment to it, correct?
We had a Reserve Management Act. It did not contain this fund.
Okay, there was no money in it before.
This is a new fund that's being, the amendment is to add this fund to the Reserve Management Act.
Okay. And the one question, and perhaps Mayor, you can answer this. You want to keep it in there so it can't be used right away. Did you say something like five years?
Well, it's based on, when you get, it's meant to be augment the general fund, add additional funding stream. So it's a minimum of five years and a maximum of 10 years, because if, for example, we made a decision to hire more police, we had enough money for two years, that would not be fiscally responsible. We have to have at least a given period of time to maintain a guaranteed funding stream. So there's still the existing 10% reserve, which is about $24 million right now. In that same act, there's a provision for a contingency reserve of additional 5%. This is an additional feature to this act that covers things like transferring monies from the, from Enterprise to General Fund and so on. It was a cleanup on a lot of, I thought, would be bad practices in the past to the city, and this adds just one more tool in the toolbox.
Okay. So right now, when we've sold assets, they've just gone into the general fund?
Correct.
Because I know we've sold assets.
Unless they're Enterprise funds.
Unless they're Enterprise, they've gone right into the general fund.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Has there been a motion? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you, Mayor. We now move to item 3E, actions pertaining to the sale. This is also City Manager.
Laura Gloria, Business Manager for the City Managers Office. The item before you is actions pertaining to the sale of approximately 0.7 acres of land on the northeast corner of Inyo and M Street. It's a finding of categorical exemption as well as approving the disposition It's a finding of categorical exemption, as well as approving the disposition and development of the agreement with Metro Hospitality Service. That sets the terms for the ASIS sales price of $644,688. The proposed development will deliver a four-star, 200-room hotel at this location. The sale proceeds minus a 6% broker commission will be brought back by the administration as part of the FY 2019 proposed budget. And our staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment, return to council. We have a motion by Member Baines and a second by Member Chavez. Member Bretafeld?
When is it anticipated that this development will start?
When it'll be constructed?
Mm-hmm.
It is anticipated to be constructed by 2020. There should be a performance schedule in the back of your, which I thought I tapped here, of your disposition and development agreement. But it should commence construction October of 2018, and then completion is estimated for 2020, late fall 2020.
And then if they don't comply with these timelines, the sale would dissolve?
Right. So if this agreement is executed, they will deposit $50,000 as a deposit. They'll go through their due diligence phase, and the property will stay in escrow until they actually submit for their building permits. And then, at that point, we'll actually close escrow. There's still actually language in the agreement after that, that if they don't meet the performance schedule, the land will come back to the city. So that way, it makes sure that, at some point in time, by 2020, we have a developed hotel.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, the screen is clear. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further comment, we'll vote. Is there any opposition to this item? Okay, seeing none, item carries seven to zero. And then while I was out earlier, Member Soria, we did 3F, and we finished the agenda, correct? Okay. So that means we can move to our scheduled item for 1:30. This is a joint meeting of the City of Fresno to the Redevelopment Agency. And then I'm going to be taking these in a different order than what you all have on your agendas this afternoon. We're going to begin with item 2. This is a resolution amending the Reserve Management Act. Wait, we already, we just did that, right? And we also did number 2. Okay, so I'm in the correct order. This is going to be the third of the three that we kind of rearranged. We just flipped the other ones. So this is actions pertaining to the owner participation agreement with 1501 North Blackstone Avenue. And so for that, we turn it over to staff. Okay, Mayor Brand.
Get used to the new microphone. Okay. Yeah, thank you, Member Soria and Marlene. This is a proposal for an 88-unit affordable housing complex. And I can say honestly, when I first took a look at this, it caught my attention because of the high cost per unit. And I made a reputation as a council member, looking at these same things, and I brought them out because, and there were cases when they were simply just overpriced or not done properly. So let me lay out my qualifications to judge this. I've been a licensed real estate broker for over 30 years, certified property manager, licensed general contractor. I've managed thousands of units. I've built units. I've rehabbed units. I've done tax credit deals. So I think I'm in a position to give more of an insight into this industry. And as we all know, and again, I ask everybody, and my first inclination was, my God. You know, I'm like, what a waste of government money. Can we do it more efficiently? But you've got to think counterintuitive. It's a complex deal. I'm going to try to walk it through so it makes some sense. And statewide, there's a housing shortage everywhere in the state of California. There's an affordable housing shortage. And I think there's probably about 40,000-plus homes identified in Fresno County alone as being a critical shortage of affordable housing. So Fresno is not immune from that. So the first thing we have to get our hand on, I call it the rules of engagement. What rules do we have to work under to provide affordable housing? In other words, we have to work with the cards that are dealt to us. These include things like prevailing wages, exceeding Title 24 requirements, zero PG&E bills, adding common area of 24,000 square feet, but maybe in a normal market, you'd add only a portion of that, and a competitive point system that would be counterintuitive. For example, you have to have X amount of dollars of local match to qualify. So the way the system works, it escalates the price. To be successful, you have to add all the bells and whistles and make it attractive on the point system. And this was done under a 4% tax credit. So what I did when I saw this, based on the magnitude, $38 million, and I knew the controversy that would be here, at the behest of our Council President Olivier, he wanted additional layer of due diligence. So I invoked the Better Business Act, which really didn't technically qualify because of the nature of this project. But I wanted to add additional scrutiny on this project to make sure we've looked at everything we have to look at, and we've done our job as public officials to watch over taxpayer dollars. So we reviewed the developer's business experience, their rental operations. I had the city attorney do a complete background check and a report on their business practices, and everything came out good. We also had independent contractors look at this line item to say, is this meet industry standards? Because it sounds expensive at $48,000, maybe in the private sector, without all these requirements, you could build it for $150,000 or $200,000. So I'm looking to see if these guys are fudging the numbers. And everything we had came out, they're building to industry standards. We looked at the pro forma statement in terms of the rent structure, the operating costs. The same thing is done consistent with industry standards. And let me explain what I would do when I would look at these projects. I'm going to use Hotel Fresno as an example. I was looking at, the first thing is the construction cost. In my opinion, Hotel Fresno was grossly underestimated on the cost to build it. Their rental projections were grossly overestimated. Their operating costs were underestimated. Then I looked at the principals, who are really good people, but they didn't have, in my opinion, the financial wherewithal to carry out this kind of project at the level they did. So I'm looking at the nuts and bolts of the actual proposal and not the systemic rules of engagement that we all have to work with. So everything I did met those standards. Then I looked at the security on this deal. We're going to put $500,000 in general fund money. I'll talk about it later. $600,000 on a loan. These principals, Jake and Lingo, are doing a $3.1 million, would be called a Cal FHA loan. And most loans that you go, you buy a house, are called non-recourse loans. Most commercial loans are non-recourse loans. Their loan is a recourse loan, which means they are personally guaranteeing the loan. So in the event of a foreclosure, if a house is worth $500,000, the loan's worth a million dollars, the lender's going to lose $500,000. In this case here, they have to personally guarantee the loss. So I'm looking at their level of engagement. They have skin in the game. As part of the whole process is their credibility as developers. And we have to look at the use of taxpayer funds. In this case, there's roughly $16 million in state and federal funding and approximately $12 million that they call 4% tax credits. This is not a grant. These are personal investors investing pursuant to federal guidelines where basically, over a 10-year period, they can write off up to 4% of the construction cost. And correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney. There's also a 9% tax credit program that's even more competitive, that wasn't used. Under the 9% program, the tax credits have to comprise about 63% of the total cost. So everything we go here is very strict rules by both the federal government and the state government. And here's the problem. If we don't take these monies, it's a zero-fund game. Because if we say we don't want the money, this money's going to go in another, another city's going to take our money. So this money, if we said this is a bad precedent, we're spending too much money, we're going to send it back to Sacramento, we're going to send it back to Washington. Well, it doesn't go into a vault that'll come back at some day in the future and say, we're going to give you $20 million now. You can use it to hire police. You can build parks. You can do field paddles. The money is going to go to Oakland, San Jose, another city, and they're going to take our money. The people in the City of Fresno pay taxes. They pay federal and state taxes. This is our money. You're saying to the people of Fresno, we don't care about it. We don't think it's right. In other words, don't take your ideological views to exceed the legitimate needs of the community. And you have to look at the consistency and how you invest and what you take, what you don't take. We have a budget of $1.1 billion. Probably two-thirds or more of that budget are state and federal monies. So, and I can guarantee you, going across the board, if I was a private auditor, is the private sector, could we do it more efficiently? Yeah, you could find literally millions of dollars. You could turn the whole thing back to the state of California and the United States government. And guess what you'd have? You'd have a bankrupt city. We're a poor city. Every city needs as much as we can. So do we say to the High-Speed Rail, we don't want $28 million for infrastructure on Veterans Boulevard? When SB1 funds come in next year for gas tax, do we say it was a bad tax? And I agree with the bad tax. But do we refuse that money? Or do we use that money to pave our streets? Sending a message to Sacramento or to Washington, D.C., will fall on deaf ears. When I was doing this 10, 15 years ago, it was the same upside-down system. In that period of time, you've had Democratic administrations. You've had Republican administrations. And one thing is consistent. It's never changed. Republicans aren't changing. Democrats aren't changing. In fact, the state of California, this was their solution to the affordable housing crisis. I forgot the Senate bill, what the number was. But basically, they were going to waive some of the secret requirements, which means time, money, we're going to save some money. At the same time, they said on private project, not public project, private projects, we're going to require prevailing wages. So their answer was, I'm going to save you $1 and cost you $10. That's, is where you're going to go with the state of California and Washington. There's no solution. The money is not going to go anyplace else but another city. This council voted 7-0 to approve general fund money for affordable housing. And these funds can only be used for affordable housing, and they won't be drawn upon until they meet all their thresholds with a myriad of agencies, tax credits and so on, state and federal. That money stays uncommitted until they meet all those standards. And the funding is roughly $500,000 for the EDA funds that were earmarked, again, on a 7-0 vote for the council for affordable housing, $329,000 in impact fees, which, by the way, are covered through the Economic Expansion Act, which covers properties in the Blackstone corridor, whether this was public housing or private housing, would qualify for the same thing. Off-site improvements of $478,000, which will be covered by SB1 and CMAC money, and a $600,000 loan from the RDA that we paid back over four years. And I want to thank Councilmember Olivier for asking me to make some changes. And FACS is going to be providing one of the loans and reducing the time. And there was a proposal one time to extend it to seven years. And I said, no, because I spent a lot of time on the debt policies for the city and the Reserve Management Act to make sure the city never got in this habit of taking money from enterprise and doing extended loans to the general fund, particularly without council approval. So I turned it down. I said, that's not a step I want to go, based on our history. So when you compare investments to the private sector, to an affordable housing complex, you're really comparing apples and oranges. When I go to do a conventional loan on an apartment complex, particularly since 2008, when all the rules were rewritten after the major fallout in the economy, you typically now have to put between 30% to 40% down as a down payment, and you're going to get a conventional loan of 60% to 70%. And the return on investment that most investors look for is 10%, or something close to that. Sometimes it'll go as low as 5% if they believe the market's going to escalate, but they typically look for 10%. So you compare, again, these two investments. You're getting 10%. You're putting a big down payment. And your rents, there was a sale of 614 units about a month ago for 160,000 units. And these are nice units in Fresno, which I thought 160 was high, based on my experience. Well, how come you can do it for 160? Well, if you took those 160 units and said, your rent's $2,000 a month. We're going to make you 100% affordable housing and drop your rents to $800 a month. I guarantee you, the price would have been much less. They're not comparable. You look at this deal and any affordable housing deal, the loan of $3.1 million, the primary loan, is less than 10% of the entire financing structure. The tax credits cover roughly $12.3 million. So what is the return on investments for the Lingo family on this project? It's roughly 1/10 of 1%. I can guarantee you, as I've been into business, nobody's going to go out there and invest this kind of money and put their name on a recourse loan to get a return of 1/10 of 1%. And I know people have talked, and they're good questions about, well, why don't we buy existing units, rehab the units, or do some other type of... Let me give an example. And an example's not made to criticize any individual. It's to criticize the system. We took the Fultonio Apartments in the Tower District. I remember 30 years ago, we managed the Fultonio Apartments. And the developer had to come in. He had to put the zero-energy PG&E, make a myriad of improvements, millions of dollars. Well, we all know that ended out on the council. That was a financial disaster because it was never going to work to begin with. That is why you'd very seldom see a for-profit investor buying affordable housing. All the rules, all the regulations, the rules of engagement are against it. It's all done with maximum financing, with tax credit, people taking equity ownership, and these types of crazy things that don't make sense from a business point of view. If you look at the rent structure of this project, 20% of the units are going to be between 60% to 80% of the area median income. 50% are between 30% to 60% area median income. 30% of the units are 30% of area median income. In other words, a one-bedroom apartment is going to rent for $327 a month. A two-bedroom apartment is going to rent for $395 a month. And guess what? They have no PG&E bill. I can absolutely guarantee you, there's no place on the open market where you can get anything remotely close to this kind of rent, this structure. Because it's designed, it's designed to help the working poor and poor people who can't afford a market-rate house. And we have thousands of those people who live in our community. The city has hired, actually, the Housing Authority has hired Barbara Poppy, a national expert on homelessness. And I've met with her. I know a couple of council members have met with her. And she has said that if we do nothing in terms of the transitional housing and permanent housing on homelessness, within three years, our homeless population is going to triple. These 88 units, based on the makeup of ones, two, and three bedrooms, are going to house, in my experience, are going to house between 350 to 400 people. I'm willing to tell you, if this deal does not go through, a good percentage of those 350 to 400 people will end up homeless. And they'll end up in your district, or my district, or anybody's district, and be a problem. This is a step in the right direction to add in affordable housing, to address economic problems, to address a homeless problem. It's not going to solve it, but it's a step in the right direction. In a perfect world, I could find a million ways to do it more efficiently. I don't have that. That's not within the rules of engagement. That's not with the cards we have. We don't have that option. And I don't believe there's any solution going to come out of Sacramento or Washington. Any message, again, that goes there will fall on deaf ears. So in the end, what do we get out of it? Well, this project is going to have $500,000 in general fund money. It's going to have $329,000 from the impact fees, at a waiver. That would be, again, available to anybody on a private. But we're going to be eligible for the Sustainable Transportation Infrastructure Funds between $2 to $5 million. And these are funds that can be used for infrastructure projects, including trails, bike lanes, street lighting, signage, pedestrian crossings, et cetera, within a one-mile radius of this project, which would probably cover two or three council districts. If you look at the leverage, what does your $500,000 get? It gets you four to 10 times that amount when you calculate all the return. You get 88 affordable housing units at $5,600 per unit. Actually, less, because actually, the other benefits will outweigh that. And you have a catalyst. This is the whole theory. A catalyst to improve Blackstone and raise property values by one project at a time. A rising tide lifts all ships. Let me finally conclude. If this council, and it takes five... If this council, and it takes five votes for this to approve, does not approve this project, the 500,000 dollars remains where it's at. City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, it would take a 5-2 vote of the council to put this money in any other category. Is that correct?
For the 500,000.
Yes.
For the 500,000 that was budgeted, yes.
Okay. I'm just asking tonight, and again, for those council members that have the doubts and it raises, you know, your eyebrows and your concerns, I share those. But our job, we were elected to further the issues of the city's citizens of Fresno, not to promote our own ideological issues. And again, I have strong reservations like they do. My job is to make this a better city. Your job is to make this a better city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, is there a staff presentation that goes along with the mayor's presentation?
No, I have staff here to answer questions, but no, we weren't.
That concludes the administration's presentation. Okay. Let's go ahead and go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish? Huh? Oh, yeah. Do you want to introduce the item? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mayor, for going through very thoroughly this project. Today, I'm very excited to bring this mixed-use project before the council. This project will meet many city goals and community needs, but before just getting into the details, I do want to publicly thank Ben and Jake Lingo for their vision and stamina in putting all the pieces of this project together. Also, the mayor and the city staff for their support and willingness to work through the process. And then I also just want to personally thank my council colleague Oliver Baines for helping me navigate through much of it. This journey has been many years in the making, but hopefully today, we will be able to add one more celebration to this journey. First, I want to touch on why I've advocated so strongly for this development. Anyone who knows me or has followed my position during budget and policy decision knows that I understand the need for affordable housing and our responsibility as city leaders to ensure our residents have access to clean, safe, and quality affordable housing. I've actually supported every affordable housing development that has come in front of this council. More specifically, this project is expected to have a profound positive impact on our community for years to come. The underemployed and our working poor will benefit. As you have heard from the mayor, and that the city's investment will leverage 30 million plus of state and other funding here into this city. As city officials, we serve our constituents by advocating for a better quality of life for our city residents. Today, we have an opportunity to change the outcomes for thousands of working poor families. I just want to remind everyone that there are thousands of families that live here in our city that use 50% or more of their income to cover housing expenses. What does that mean? That means that they have less disposable income that could benefit our local economy. This development will change that for many families. As council members of the fifth-largest city in the state of California, we are charged with participating in the state's goals to provide affordable housing, and as such, we have committed to that goal by adopting our Housing Element Plan, in which we pledged to construct safe, affordable, and adequate supply of affordable housing units in our city. In fact, the city of Fresno and this council has set a goal of 22,178 units over the next 10 years, meaning that we should be producing about 2,200 units a year, and we're only averaging 1,300 in this past year. So, this project will get us closer to our goal. Yes, it is expensive. I will agree, as the mayor shared, and I know that there's been other folks that have shared this concern. I will say that I personally think that it's unfortunate that a couple of my colleagues have used this development as a vehicle to spew political rhetoric, when in fact, there had been opportunities to change this HSE program. I know it is because of the HSE program, the rules of engagement as talked by the mayor, that this project is as expensive as it gets. HSE actually came here to the city of Fresno to get our input for those guidelines, so we've all had an opportunity to share what our concerns were, so these costs wouldn't be what they are today. I also want to take this opportunity just to remind the city that this council and previous councils have supported these types of developments across the city. We've built these types of developments with partners like Granville, the Fresno Housing Authority, which I know they're here in the room, and most recently with the Cesar Chavez Foundation, and we've seen the benefits across the city of these types of developments. Today, I ask my colleagues to consider the amount of money we are leveraging with our city's contribution. This is probably one of the best leveraged deals I have voted on in my time on the council. Our investment not only will get us 88 units, but it will also include, if you read through the detailed of the staff report, it includes an after-school center, an adult computer lab, the residents there will receive home ownership counseling. There's an opportunity for us to bring a community health clinic, Clinica Sierra Vista, here in the room. They're already in conversations with the developers. That means that Fresno City College could probably enter into a partnership with their nursing students, their dental assistance students could actually walk across the street and do their rotations there. This is an exciting project because, again, it not only provides housing for individuals, the developers have also shared that if we want to take some space within the development for community space, they will afford it to the city for a dollar a year. Also, we've heard from the mayor, we will get minimum about 2 million dollars, but close to 5, potentially 5 million dollars for infrastructure improvements within a mile radius of this development. That means improved sidewalks, bike lanes, trails, our streets being fixed, and so this is exciting stuff. And to top it off, this city council always prides itself in supporting projects that will bring jobs to our community. I think the developers can attest to this, but this project will bring over 400 jobs here locally. When we live in a city that has such a high unemployment rate, 400 jobs is not a small feat. Also, I know in conversations with the developers, a third of the actual dollars will be used, will be directly infused to our local businesses. I spoke to them earlier today. A lot of their materials, their building materials, are going to be bought in our local lumberyards. What does that mean? All those dollars are recycling here locally. So, there's a multitude of benefits that come with this type of investment. And this investment is, this housing development is near one of the oldest and largest community colleges in the state, as well as other amenities such as shopping, employment centers. There's an elementary school around the corner, and I've talked to the principal there. They have one of the highest transient rates in that school, Heaton Elementary, again, because they don't have stable housing. This will provide stable housing for 88 families in our community. And, most importantly, it sits in the city's BRT line, which we know is being transformed into a major transportation corridor, and it's going to provide these residents a convenient transportation to get to school and to their employment sites. So, there's a lot of benefits, and so I encourage my council colleagues to support this project. It will ensure that not only we build more affordable housing units, but that the city of Fresno really gets its fair share of dollars that are being taken out of our local community, employers that live here in the city, like Chevron and other folks like that, that are being sent to this HSE fund. We're going to draw those dollars back, and our community deserves that and even more. And so, I want to just encourage all of our council colleagues to consider this investment and support this today. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. I have one yellow card. Eric Payne, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, please, and you'll have two minutes.
Eric, excuse me, I'm coming down with a, I'm getting over a cold. So, Eric Payne, 1444 Fulton Street, 93721. So, I'm speaking in partnership with the Better Blackstone Association. Adjacent to the parcel for the development is one of the largest higher education institutions in our region, and I would first like to thank Councilmember Brandau and Council President Olivier for challenging us to think differently in how we begin to be a better neighbor to the residents that we serve in our neighborhoods. And so, with that, as a member of the association, we stand in strong favor of supporting this project. There's been a lot of hard work and a lot of due diligence in terms of the conversations that have taken place with city staff and with the city manager's office, and in collaboration with the mayor's office to support this project. As you've heard, this will reach a bottom line of those that fall under the 30% AMI. And so, with that, I encourage the members of this board to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll also have two minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Don Lopez, 2273 Roberts Avenue, Clovis, California. I am the Vice President of Instruction at Fresno City College. Thank you for allowing me the two minutes to speak today. We are in support of this particular project. As Councilmember Soria indicated, there are some opportunities for us as a college to participate in the residents that would be in this particular facility. She mentioned things like our dental hygiene project and our nursing program. We've been in discussions about how we could help support a facility, for instance, that might have healthcare providers in the facility itself. It would allow us an opportunity for our students to be placed in clinicals and rotations, which are often a very difficult thing for us to be able to do, given the limited number of health providers. And so, we are here today to support the activity. I'm here on behalf of the President for Fresno City College, Dr. Carol Goldsmith. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this item? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll also have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ruben Chavez, Clinica Sierra Vista, Chief Administrative Officer for here in Fresno. Again, we are in support of this project as well. As mentioned earlier, there's an opportunity for us to have a health center there. Many of these patients who are, many of these people who will be living there are probably our patients already. It's also an opportunity for us to work with Fresno City, which we have been already. We have a, they have staff who do precept, or students who do precept at our locations. So, this is a no-brainer for us, and this is something that we've done before in Bakersfield. We have a Baker Street Clinic that we do something very similar to. So, we have experience doing this, and this is something that we think that will be very powerful for the community, very powerful for Fresno, and it's just, just makes a lot of sense for us. And we appreciate the fact that we were actually asked, and again, very honored to participate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Dorothy Smith, and what else did you say to name for the record?
Name and address. If you choose to give it.
My address, Fresno, California. No, 5262 North Elso, Fresno, California. And I just want to say that I support the project as well. There are many components that I believe in and support. When we talk in terms of affordable housing and the working poor, we need to understand when we talk about the working poor, many of these people are proud people, and they're working, and they also have the American dream. They want to have homes, and they also believe that, and I want everybody to understand, it's just because you're poor, you don't have to be poor class. They want the same things for their children that we all want. They believe in the American dream. And although I'm no longer a trustee of the State Center Community College District, I also love that district. I did know that Fresno City College is a partner, and when you think in terms of our medical students going over there, just having to walk, we give more opportunities. Everybody's talking about the fact that we don't have places to place these students right across the street. That's an ideal situation. So, I just want to say I'm in support, and the integrated community is an idea whose time has come. So, thank you so much for presenting this and for me having the opportunity to show my support.
Thank you. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. You'll also have two minutes.
Thank you, President Olivier and council, for being able to come up and speak to this. Very grateful for the analysis and the logic laid out by the mayor and for the passion and commitment of Councilmember Soria. I'm with Fresno Metro Ministry. My name's Keith Bergfold, 4270 North Blackstone. We really do believe that the transformation of Blackstone will be one project at a time. And this project does implement the Fresno City General Plan, it implements the new development code, it supports bus rapid transit through Transit Oriented Development, and what a great investment around City College, this really amazing facility that really needs to be opened up more to Blackstone and be related to the development of the entire central Fresno. So, we wholeheartedly support it and certainly appeal to you to support it as well. Thank you very much.
Are there any other speakers on this item? If so, please come forward. If they don't want to come up.
Jake and Ben, do you want to come up?
Are they going to be on a two minutes? Or do you want to bring them up with your time? Because I'm going to...
Yeah. Can we give them a little bit more?
I don't have a problem with them speaking, but so, this is during, this is a public comment period. I want to be fair to everyone. My question is, so they're the applicants, so they have unlimited time?
No.
Would it be now during public comment?
The applicant typically is allowed more time, yes.
During public comment? Or do we call them up after public comment is closed, and then I can give them?
That's at your discretion.
That's at my discretion. All right, let's go ahead and finish up with public. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? So, please come forward. Okay. Seeing no more comment, we'll go ahead and close that period and bring it back to the council dais, and I'll turn it over to Member Soria.
Yeah, I'd just like to briefly call up Jake. If you would just want to share, I know you had a few remarks. Go ahead.
I'll start out by just saying, thank you, Council President and council members for having me here today. Thank you, Councilmember Soria and to Mayor Brand. That was a fantastic presentation. It's going to be hard to build upon either of those, but as my brother and I were just talking about, I know you guys have heard a lot about this development, but we've been here now, working on it for two and a half years, and I have a few other comments to add to it, just so you can understand. I can add to some of the comments that have already been made and some of the perspective that we come from, not only from a Fresno perspective, but from a statewide perspective on affordable housing. My name, as the councilwoman mentioned, is Jake Lingo, and I'm here on behalf of Integrated Community Development Corporation for Better Housing and the Blackstone McKinley Transit Oriented Development. Quick background, our development team has completed over 70 affordable housing developments throughout this state, totally more than 4,500 apartment units. We're the nation's largest private net-zero developer, and it's our core competency to bring private investment together with public dollars to try to create the best developments that we can. As I mentioned, we've been working on this for two and a half years to put together this world-class development for this city. And as developers, we're tasked with leveraging, again, public dollars with private dollars to bring forward projects that meet the goals of the general plan, your housing element, the vision of the city, and then also bring him out the greatest amount of good for the greatest amount of people. So, what we do is we look at the different funding programs that are out there and that are available to us. And what we have right now is we've got a 2.7 million dollar investment from the city that we can then take and leverage in to programs to try to bring the greatest amount of good to the city of Fresno. And really, what is available at this point in time in affordable housing are two routes in the state of California. You can go through the 9% tax credit route, which the mayor touched on, and then you can go through the affordable housing and sustainable communities route, in which we are looking to go towards. We ran this evaluation and looked at the 9% program, and with the 2.7 million dollars of housing funds that the city is providing, and the current climate of the 9% tax credit program, you could get about 20 affordable housing units with that 2.7 million dollar investment. Or, we can leverage that same 2.7 million dollars of housing funds that the city has and create 88 units of affordable housing on Blackstone. Now, as with all government projects, these funds come with certain strings, and these strings are expensive. To understand what drives the cost behind this increase in cost, I'm going to go through a few of the attributes of this project. We will have to build it with prevailing wage labor. The building will be LEED gold-certified. That's the second-highest rating that can be attained through the LEED program. The building will also be net-zero energy. That means that through a solar array, the development will produce as much electricity as it consumes throughout the entire year, and this savings is then passed on to the tenants that live there. Additionally, because of this program, we have to pay relocation to the existing people that are leasing the site currently. So, I now want to take just a step back and talk a little bit about AHSE, because that... So I now want to take just a step back and talk a little bit about AHSC, because that, that term gets thrown around a lot, and took some time and really understand where it comes from. It's from the cap and trade dollars from the state of California. These dollars are derived from auctioning off permits to oil refineries, food processors, power plants, other big businesses, big businesses for the right to release greenhouse gas emissions into our atmosphere. The money is collected for these permits, and then the state invested into programs that they feel lowers greenhouse gas emissions. AHSC is one of these programs. They're offering $255 million for housing and infrastructure. The city of Fresno has some of the worst air quality in the entire state of California. I'm not saying that to bash Fresno. I'm from Bakersfield. I grew up with it. I live it. I've lived it every day. The point is, these companies are paying money to the state to pollute our cities, and the city of Fresno is being affected as bad as anyone in the state. And the only way to take those dollars and invest them into the city is to go and get these cap and trade. So the city of Fresno is burying the brunt of the pollution and the greenhouse gas emissions. They deserve to get their fair share. That, that's my position. Why should we collect these fees and then have them go off to San Francisco, San Jose, or Los Angeles? We need to invest them into the, the communities that are being the most adversely affected. Now, I know that some say this is too expensive and that the state should be investing these funds differently. I'm not here today to argue whether or not the state should or should not be investing in this way. It's already been decided. So my job is to bring the funds here. They're there. I don't think another city should go and get them. I think that we deserve them, that the city of Fresno deserves them. At this time, I want to take a quick moment and just show you what the current situation is at Blackstone and McKinley. This is the, the current development that is there. It's a picture of the past. It's served as... Nope, we don't have it.
Cindy, can you put the...
Okay. This is what currently exists at that location. It's a picture of the past. It has served its purpose. It's now blighted. It's a little rundown. It's a little tired. I want to show you what the vision of the future is. This is what we believe that the city, that the surrounding, the largest city college in the cit, in the state of California should look like. This is the centerpiece of the Blackstone corridor. We feel this is the future of Fresno. This is why I want to bring these AHSC funds to Fresno. What we are going to build is not only an 88-unit LEED Gold net zero development, but we're also going to bring the following. A grant to the city from AHSC of between $3 to $4 million to be spent on public infrastructure. This is an immediate return on investment to the city for their $2.7 million investment of housing funds. We'll bring a senior center leased to the city $1 a year for 15 years. A brand-new medical and dental clinic to serve the families and students in the area. Three to 400 new construction jobs. Over $15 million in locally purchased construction services and materials. And a shining example of what is possible for the future of the Blackstone Avenue. As I've outlined in my remarks, I think the focus of this conversation should be the return on investment. I'm tasked with leveraging city, state, and federal resources the best of my ability. The city, your ta, your task is much more multifaceted, and I understand that. But one of the most important tasks that you are given is to do what's the most fiscally responsible for the taxpaying fayers' funds, the city of Fresno. With these $2.7 million of housing funds, we can do one of two things. We can go to 9% route. We can get 20 units of garden-style walk-up, traditional affordable housing. Or we can get this 88-unit catalyst project across the street from Fresno City College and also bring a $3 to $4 million investment. The 9% route doesn't bring another $3 to $4 million to the city. This route does. So these are the options that currently exist. I believe we must invest the $2.7 million of city housing funds to deliver 88 units of affordable housing and bring the $3 to $4 million to Fresno. Fresno deserves it. It's the best business decision, and I believe it's the best, the best decision for the taxpaying families of Fresno. I'm here along with my brother Ben Lingo. We'll answer any questions you guys have, and I thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't know if there are any questions or comments by any of my colleagues. I don't see anyone punched up yet. I will make a motion on this item. Any other questions, comments?
Gosh, I don't even know where to start. I do have to thank the mayor and Tim for your remarks, because you probably dramatically cut down my remarks. So I know that your remarks were aimed at some of my concerns, and that's fine. I'm, I'm good with that. I'm about, so I have a, a little host of questions. Ben and Jake, I'll probably call you up in a second. So one of my first questions is, and then I'm going to talk about why I'm opposed to the project, which doesn't surprise my colleague, Councilmember Soria. We talked about this project a couple times, and I've been quite public about it. Done a video, a couple of videos about it. And so if anybody wants to know more thoroughly why I would, why would somebody be opposed to this, they could check out my council Facebook page. But I, the only thing I would have to disagree with Councilmember Soria was not much political in it at all. But mayor, when I first became a council member about five years ago, we were faced with a similar affordable housing project, and the units cost $226,000. And with your help, the units were chopped down to $210,000 a unit. Now, these units are going to be north of $400,000, so essentially almost a doubling of the, of the amount that it takes to build affordable housing in the city of Fresno in five years. So if it doubled in five years, five years from now, you'll be in the middle of your second term, and Sacramento will be coming to you to spend $1 million per unit. Are you going to be prepared to support that at that time?
Back then, what I would do is look at each project itself and look at the merits of the project, determine where their costs, for example, there was a project at one time, there were a couple houses that were $220,000, which we found out had like $30,000 in soft cost, development fees, and so on, that were later taken out and reduced. So that's why I had the Better Business Act due diligence put in and ask a couple of local contractors to, that specialize in affordable housing, to look at these and say, is there fat built into these things? Is there anywhere we can cut this back? So we looked at that. Also, this program has evolved. This is a different program they're using than some of the other programs. For example, this has the net zero that these other programs didn't have to have. So do I like it, Steve, that we have to pay $400,000? No, I don't. I think it's ridiculous, but it's what we have to, to deal with right now. If we can find a solution down the road, I don't see any coming from Sacramento or Washington DC, I'm, I will embrace it. But for right now, again, these are the, the rules of engagement. So am I frustrated? Yes, I am. But my primary obligation is to the citizens of this city, and this is what we have to work with right now. This, based on our limited investment from the general fund, provides a tremendous return, and I think we have, you know, to take this, and we take this one step at a time. But again, there's differences between what we saw a few years ago and what we're seeing today.
Yeah, and I expect that if several of the key candidates win the governorship of the state of California next November, we'll see a new paradigm come out, probably hypothetically even more constrictive than this one. The parameters could change again, become more harsh or more, well, more progressive. And I mean, they could, we could easily come back and see units in the $600, $700,000 range. I mean, where is the limit? So mayor, my question is, do you have a, a limit that you would, a line that you would say, I could not support that?
Well, there's two ways to tackle this problem. One way is to try to, you know, keep the cost of housing down. The second is to elevate the people in this town. My job is to take people out of poverty, to find job opportunities, get to the point where hopefully sometime in the future, we don't have 40,000 homes in Fresno County that need affordable housing. We can have people that have jobs and can afford to go to a market-rate housing, which has have totally different financing. That would be my goal. But down the road, Steve, I would take a look at it. I'd be the first one to go to Sacramento and testify that we have a, a system that is, is counterintuitive, a system that is an oxymoron in terms of calling it affordable housing.
Well, don't you think that system already exists?
Yes, but this is the system we have to work with today. And we're a city that's probably be one of the most impacted cities in the state of California in terms of our level of poverty and our, our critical shortage of affordable housing.
Okay. I, and then Ben and Jake, and then I've got a couple other comments, but either one of, Jake, I guess you were speaking earlier. I'd like to ask you a question, please. All right. So Jake, when these units are built, what are going to be the rents paid?
Typical family of four is going to earn between, to qualify to live here, is going to earn between $18,000 to $36,000 a year. Rents for a one-bedroom are going to range from $337 to $675 a month. Two-bedrooms from $405 to $810 a month. And a three-bedroom will range from $467 to $934, and that depends on the area meeting income level of the resident that's applying. So there's a certain rent structure that's outlined in the, the packet that you have, and then associated with their income level, that'll dictate what rent they get.
Can you go over the two-bedroom again?
Sure. $405 to $810.
Okay. And why the variance of range there between the $405? Is that based on their income?
That's correct.
Okay. And then will that rent be subsidized in some other form to you guys?
No. There's no, if you're referring to like a housing voucher or anything like that, there's nothing associated with the development. Someone could bring a housing voucher to us that obtains one of those, but we do not have any type of rental assistance associated with the development.
So the housing voucher that they could hypothetically bring would cut down the price that they paid from the $405 to the $810? Might reduce that?
Actually, it would just pay their rent. It's a, yeah, it would pay their rent. So that comes through the housing authority, and they get that voucher, and then they can take it to where they can, they can qualify to live.
Perfect. All right. Hey, thanks, Jake. I appreciate it. And I also appreciate meeting in my office the other day. So I think that's really where I would like to start my comments today, is that I think you guys are very capable. I found you to be quite sharp on the subject. This is your livelihood. You build affordable housing, and you were very knowledgeable. You walked me through it, and, and I think you guys did a great job, and my expectations are that the project itself will also turn out fantastic. And so I do appreciate that. So thank you, Jake. I'm, I'm done. I don't need you there anymore.
Okay. I return the same thanks. Thanks for taking the time to meet with me. I know that you started off opposed to it, but for you to sit down and, and take the time to meet with us, it means a lot to us as well. So thank you so much.
You got it. You got it. Do us a good job out there on Blackstone and McKinley. So really, I, I don't want to go point for point to rebut the mayor. I don't feel the need to do that. I've made my comments on this subject relatively clear throughout the process, and I don't think my colleagues expect me to change, so we're all good. The only thing that's left for me to talk about is, is the very core of why I'm opposed. Some might think that the core of why I'm opposed is about taxpayer money, and, and I think that is right there at the top. But I'll tell you another thing that drives me to the position that I'm in. The thing that I cannot get away from is the affordable housing crisis that's being faced in the state of California. And in my opinion, from a conservative vantage point, we are simply not going to seriously address this crisis if this is the model that has been chosen for us. And I say chosen for us, because that's essentially what the mayor is saying, that these are the parameters that we've been given, we've got no other route to go but to accept these parameters. So this model's been chosen for us. I have no faith in Sacramento that this model can mathematically get us out of the affordable housing crisis that we face in the state of California. And I just want to throw out a number. I don't want to get lost in numbers today, but I think locally, and Councilmember Soria, you had a different set of numbers, and I'll talk with you about that later. But I felt like we had identified that our region needs about 8,000 affordable housing units immediately. And this project is going to cost, this project's going to tackle 88 of those 8,000, so essentially 1%. So we're going to spend $38 million on 1%. So if we were going to get serious about the 8,000 units, you could extrapolate, that's going to cost about $3.5 billion. That's just in our neighborhood to tackle the affordable housing, if this is the model that we choose. So oddly enough, I would like to talk for a moment to all of the people that are supportive of tackling the affordable housing crisis in the state of California. If your goal is to really alleviate the massive problem that we face in the state of California, you cannot in clear conscience agree that the model that is chosen by Sacramento is going to touch that. Now, I will be equally happy with Councilmember Soria for the 88 families that get help from this model. Okay? So we're going to help 88 families. If we had even slightly shifted the parameters to include the type of, the type of project the private, a private contractor would build, we could easily, for the same amount of money, get about 200 units. Okay? A little over two times the number of units. If we chose a model, that's choosing a model that's operating all over the city of Fresno currently, almost at these same standards. So not a reduction in the value of the project, but using the same standards underneath a different model that's practiced all over our city currently. And so even if we just went with that model, we could provide help for 200 families instead of 88 families. If we even improved upon that model and Sacramento would allow, would remove regulations, we could help even more families with $38 million. So one of my major concerns, and the reason I have to stand opposed today is because I don't believe for a minute that this is going to help the affordable housing crisis we face in the state of California. And that, one thing that makes me sad today is not this project. I'm very happy for Blackstone and McKinley. I'm happy for the extra goodies that come to the city of Fresno, like streetlights and, and sidewalk. I'm pleased that that's part of the equation. And trust me, I'm not going to, when this project goes up on Blackstone, I'm going to drive by in amazement, and I look forward to that day. But when it comes to helping people across the state of California, this model will not succeed. And so we are enshrining that when I'm done being a council member, when everybody in this room is, is at the end of their rope, we're still going to have an affordable housing crisis in the state of California, because we're not getting serious about that problem. And so with that, I think I'm just going to stop right there. It's a philosophical position that I have, but sometimes philosophy becomes reality. And I think, I really do believe in the crisis that we're facing in the state of California, and I don't think this is the right way to tackle that. And so I'll, I'll be opposed today. I don't think anybody's surprised, but those are the reasons. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there staff, staff that I can ask some questions to?
Yeah, go ahead, ask your question, and then we can pull up someone if we need to.
Okay. What is, I mean, I'm hearing a lot of different numbers thrown around in terms of what we need for affordable units. Where are we at in the city of Fresno in terms of what, what is needed?
Go ahead. The number of affor...
Do we know?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. I know we have to, we have to look into that.
Okay, so, I mean, we're not sure, and that's not surprising. You know, I hear 4,000, 8,000, 40,000. We're not sure, but obviously there's, there's a lot of affordable housing we need. And I, and I want to be clear, I support affordable housing. I have voted for affordable housing in the past. But we're, we're asking to suspend our financial logic and rationality and due diligence with this project. And this project, two years ago, which was adopted by the council, two years ago, was $27 million. Two years later, it comes back, it's $38 million. It's $11 million more, and it was 88 units then. I hear a lot of talk about, well, we're taking city money and investing it for these 88 units, and the four, $3 to $4 million we're using of city money gets us several thousand dollars per unit, but that overlooks the fact that there's state taxpayer money that's being spent on this as though that's irrelevant. Fresnoans pay state taxes. I pay state taxes. That's taxpayer money. I don't know why we want to overlook any other tax dollars just because it isn't general fund or city funds. I pay state taxes. That's taxpayer money. I don't know why we want to overlook any other tax dollars just because it isn't general fund or city funds. All of this is our tax dollars. All of this is what Fresenons pay for. And when we have a thirty-eight million dollar project for eighty-eight units that come out to four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars per apartment unit, I mean, it's mind-boggling. I understand about all of the benefits. I understand about the perks that come with it. We all want those things. But I think as my colleague said, this model is not going to work. I mean, two years later, it's eleven million dollars. And it's because of state mandates, state regulations that are onerous, that are absurd. And if we truly want to make a dent in the affordable housing crisis, we can't just be complicit with state mandates and state regulations and state fiscal policy insanity. Because that's what this is. And it's only going to get worse. And at what point do you take a stand and say, this doesn't work? It's too expensive? It's not going to truly solve the problem? It's only going to put a Band-Aid on a major wound? And that's exactly what this project does. Now, this is in no way anything against the developers, because they're just following the rules. They're following the mandates that Sacramento sets down. I know they're very experienced developers. So this has nothing to do with them per se. This has to do with the overfiscal analysis of this project. And we're being asked to suspend all financial reality and say, this is a good thing. If we had sent this to the private sector, we, instead of eighty-eight units, as Councilmember Brandall said, we'd have two hundred units. If we didn't have to put solar panels throughout this project because of state mandates, we'd be able to build two hundred units. So I'm interested in trying to solve a problem. I'm interested in doing fiscal due diligence. You know, we are all sent here and we all talk about being great stewards of the taxpayer dollar. And yet we're willing to be complicit with Sacramento insanity. I'm not willing to be a part of that. I understand, as the mayor says, you know, this is what we face. But just because that's what we face doesn't mean we should comply with it and be complicit with it. I won't be. I'm not going to be. I'm going to say that this is insanity. This doesn't make any fiscal sense. And while you may get eighty-eight units, we ought to be able to get two hundred units. We ought to be able to build homes for the kind of money that's being asked to be spent here. And for that reason, I simply can't support this in any way. Again, I understand the rationale from my colleagues. You know, some want to say it's political rhetoric and it's ideological. I think it's just fiscal sanity. And I think, you know, today it is four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a unit and a couple of years from now, it's going to be five and six. And it'll be seven. And the same rationale for supporting it will be, it's what we face, it's what we have to deal with Sacramento. If we don't do it, it'll go somewhere else. I think we all should take a stand and say, this isn't the way we solve our crisis. This isn't the way we solve our problems. Government inefficiency and government craziness is not something we ought to support. We ought to put some logic in this. And remember that all taxpayer money involved in this project is taxpayer money. The taxpayers who send us here expect us to be responsible, not only with the city money, but to be responsible with the projects we support. And for that reason, I won't support this. And, you know, I think some have suggested we really need to get together and try to come up with other strategies. I think that's exactly true. We do need to come up with other strategies. But it's, it doesn't require an inability to just sit down and use common sense to figure this out. Four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars per unit is insanity. It's fiscal insanity. And we could build homes. We could build several hundred apartments for that. And we should be opposing the mandates because this is not going to solve our problem long-term. It'll make us feel good for Blackstone and McKinley and one project, but it is not going to solve the problem. So I won't be supporting this today.
Can you guys hear me? Oh, it's on, okay. No? Okay. All right. So I'm going to try to do my best here to provide an alternative view. But the very first thing I want to do before I get into that is, I really want to take a moment and acknowledge my colleague, Councilmember Soria, for doing a really good job on a really difficult project. I need to say this publicly because we up here on the dais, we do get it. We get how hard this work is and how long we're at it. And I know sometimes in the public, you know, we're bringing this to you today, but what a lot of you guys need to know is that she worked for a few years on this to bring this to you today. And it's been through several iterations over the last couple of years. And Councilmember Soria, I know the priority that this project is for you. And it's the priority for you for all the right reasons. And you've done great work. You've stuck with it. And it's difficult. It's hard work. She did a great job. And I am very happy for you today. And I'm hopeful that we can find enough support over here to honor the work that you did on a really good project. Because it is hard work. And only a few of us that realize that. So I wanted to, wanted to start with that and make sure that my colleague is given the due credit for this project. And I also want to take a moment and acknowledge my colleagues who are in opposition to this. You know, in all honesty, I do understand the ideological discomfort. You know, Steve, all the, you know, several of your points are well-taken. And I actually know the spirit in which you say them. I really do. I know that you believe deeply in those remarks. And in some cases, I don't necessarily disagree. And you either, Gary. I think, you know, you guys do draw out an argument about the fiscal nature of this and how it doesn't make sense to some degree. And I don't think, I don't think any one of us even disagrees with that. So let me acknowledge that. I don't think we disagree that financially, from a fiscal perspective, yeah, it's challenging. It's challenging to do this. I'm not arguing with that. However, I'm going to challenge you a little bit. Because while I agree that the rules are, should be changed, I don't disagree with that either. And I'm happy to go with you to Sacramento, Washington, the lobby for that. We're not here today to challenge the rules. That's not what we're doing today. And while it may seem that from an ideological perspective, and then I'm, you know, it may seem like this is the right thing to do. In my opinion, it isn't. Because this isn't what's before us today to challenge these rules. There's a way to do that. There's a process to do that. We all can actually do it. But we're not here to do that today. And I didn't hear solutions from you guys either. You know, I do believe that all of us care deeply about affordable housing and we want people to have affordable housing. But I didn't really hear any suggestions about how we could have made this more fiscally palatable. And, you know, I'm happy to, I'm happy to hear them. But the rules are the rules. And frankly, you know, on any number of topics we disagree with the state on, we still happily take their money. Taxpayer money, by the way. And we spend it even when we disagree with it. Like today. We took some high-speed rail money. Right? And many of my colleagues will say that high-speed rail is a boondoggle, that train to nowhere and la-da-la-da-la. I don't know if you have a video on that, Steve, but I'll go look on your Facebook page since you're advertising yourself here. I'll go try to find that one down. But, you know, we disagree with that. We disagree with SB one money pretty strongly. But we happily took that and spent that today too. And so what I'm struck with is while I agree with the ideological and philosophical standpoint, is we got to pick and choose. You know, you've got to be consistent. If we really, really are strong in our opposition from a philosophical and ideological standpoint, let's make sure that we're consistent with that all the time. And stand on those principles every single time, not just when, you know, it's politically convenient. Affordable housing is important. It's important. And that point's already been made. The mayor, I think, did a great job of making the business argument for this project. As Marelda, I think you did a good job of explaining why affordable housing is important. But I'm going to take a different approach with this project because this isn't about affordable housing to me per se. While it is an affordable housing project, this is a major investment in our city. This is a thirty-eight million dollar investment that is mostly private equity. The vast majority of this investment is private equity. There's five hundred thousand dollars that we're going to contribute from the general fund. I can't remember the last time that if we did a project where it costs five hundred thousand dollars from the general fund and we were going to get thirty-eight million dollars in return, four hundred, four hundred jobs that are, for the most part, going to be high-paying jobs, fifteen million dollars in, fifteen-plus million dollars in direct purchases from our local suppliers, that we would actually be turning this investment away. I don't know, can somebody tell me what that, what the, what the land is being purchased? What is the value of that land today? Is it even ten million dollars? Is it five million dollars? Maybe about a couple million dollars, maybe? So we're taking, you know, we're getting a tenfold increase in property value that will forever come back to this general fund in taxes for a five hundred thousand dollar investment in general fund, four hundred jobs of, four hundred jobs that are created, and fifteen million dollars of direct investment in our local economy in the means of supplies. Folks, that is an economic catalyst and investment to our community. For a moment, let's just forget that we're talking about an affordable housing project. We all stand up here, I can tell you that if I took away the word affordable housing and I just read to you the details of that project, there are some of us that will be standing up here cheering and saying, bring it on, bring it on, bring it on. This is economic investment and economic catalyst in our city. Sadly, it's been turned into an ideological and political discussion because of the term affordable housing. But if you just put that away, I can tell you that all of us here have, on more than one occasion, been racing. I have, I can tell you, I'm going to give you an example. A little while ago, there was a great project that came to my district, an economic, an economic investment that came to my district. I couldn't even make the motion because people were still going to make the motion for me because all the jobs was going to create. And we waived millions of dollars in fees. We're not talking about a half a million dollars. We waived millions of dollars in fees. This dais wouldn't even let me make the motion in my own district about a project like that. So I wanted to take a different approach today. And I'm not going to belabor the issue because I think everyone gets it. Yes, affordable housing is important, I'm standing with that, but it's bigger than that. This is, this is, this is an investment in our city, mostly of private equity. And it's creating jobs and direct, and the direct investment of supplies to our businesses. These are our businesses that are going to get that investment. So we can reject the project and that investment, the private equity, will go someplace else. Some other community would get, would get all the supplies and the materials. Some other community would get the jobs. And Sacramento would care nonetheless, or Washington would care nonetheless about our, about our statement, our ideological statement. Because somebody is going to take the private equity and investment in that. And so, you know, I don't disagree with the fiscal heartburn at all. Not at all. You all are right. Doesn't make a lot of sense. So let's work together to get those rules changed. But in the meantime, let's do what's right for our citizens. We're elected here to represent our citizens. Our citizens. Not to make ideological statements. Not to send millions of dollars of private investment to another community. We are not elected to do that, folks. We are City of Fresno elected officials. The City of Fresno. Our number-one priority still, at the end of the day, has to be our community, our citizen, our citizens and our residents. That project is going to serve, it's a mixed-income project as well. So it's not just thirty percent AMI. We are talking about people that are working-class people, the middle class, the working-middle class, that will have a quality development to come home to. These are our residents. These are our folks. Washington does not care and nor does Sacramento. So Councilmember Soria, you've done a great job. You have worked really hard. You know, Ben and Jake, great job with sticking with the city as well. You know, I know the frustration you all must have. I know some folks that have been in your position before. Thank you for sticking with us. I, for one, am advocating for the investment that you all are bringing to us. It's complex. And I know you guys are as frustrated as we are about the price tag of it. I know that you aren't happy either. This is, these are the rules of the game. We can either play the rules all the time or not at all. So if we don't like the way the state does things and every time the state passes a tax that we don't like or does something we don't like, if we're going to send the money back all the time, then okay. But otherwise, let's make sure that we're being consistent. This is an economic development opportunity in our city. It is improving a vastly-needed piece of property by probably ten times, if not more, that will be ongoing money into this general fund for a minimal, minimal investment. So anyway, Councilmember Soria, I was happy to second this motion. I certainly hope that my colleagues see the wisdom in this economic development opportunity. Thank you.
I'm going to keep my remarks short because I think there's a couple of contenders today for the blah-blah-blah award. And I don't want to be in that, in that bunch. But I think, I think both, both of the sides that are arguing here today are right. I think the formulas that come out of DC, the formulas that come out of Sacramento are wacky. They don't make sense. And it's through no fault of your own. I know you guys have worked hard on this project. But I will say that, to me, it's not ideological. It's really, it really comes down to dollars and cents. And, you know, for every dollar that California sends to DC, we get seventy-eight cents back. Everybody knows that. We subsidize projects in Mississippi and Alabama and Florida and people that have better representation sometimes than we do. The Central Valley contributes about thirteen to fifteen percent of the state's general fund, California State General Fund. We know that. And to me, when I look at this project in its entirety, yes, there are a lot of community benefits to it. The health piece, I love that, the Senior Resource Center. But to me, it's just another way of leveraging dollars to the Central Valley that oftentimes gets left behind. But again, to me, this is not ideological. It's just dollars and cents. How can we get more dollars here? I have projects in my district right now that are in the works, that are actually on the final stages, that do receive state and federal dollars. The foundation project that we have, BRT. You're right, Councilman Baines, we just took some money, right? We want to get more money for Veterans Boulevard, high-speed rail, that's helping. But to me, I think this project has a lot of issues that I personally have issues with, the funding mechanism. I dealt with it when I was on the school board on LEED certification and the requirements and the convoluted process. But at the end of the day, we have to make sure that we're leveraging dollars here locally for our city, for our residents. And so I can support this today.
All right, Councilman Baines.
City manager, do you want to speak now or wait till he's finished? Do you want to speak now or do you want to wait? Remember Brandall?
All right. Oliver, Oliver, you know I tried to keep it short. So I didn't include everything because I pointed people to my video. A video. But when you can't say that I, I can't just say that I wouldn't offer solutions because I have some solutions. And so, but the solutions talk about repealing and removing regulation, not adding regulations. So for instance, in this particular project, and so let me start with the key one. If you would remove prevailing wage, which is nothing more than a political payoff from the governor to his key support structure in the state of California. Now, saying that, I just, a lot of union people just figured out for the first time, I'm never voting for Brandall. Okay? But it's a political payoff from the governor of California to his key support, which is the union. So on every project, he requires prevailing wage if it deals with money from the state. That prevailing wage will drive up the price minimum twenty-five percent. There's that. The gold, the gold LEED Gold Standard Certificate, right? That is another payoff to the governor's key support structure, which is an environmental lobby. They want that nonsense everywhere. It's beautiful, it's not needed. When you're talking about helping poor families, they're not going to give a crap if they live in a gold LEED standard-certified building. in a gold LEED standard-certified building. And then, also followed with that is the LEED, is the zero-sum energy program. That's just ludicrous, but it's a political payoff. So, you're talking about ideology here today, there's a lot of ideology built into this project, okay? So, there are some solutions, we could not require those. Furthermore, we could go even further and remove onerous regulations that penalize development in the state of California in greenfield, which California is not running out of space, people, okay? But, we're penalizing that type of development. City of Fresno's general plan enshrined that philosophy, and we only subsidize urban, high-density-type projects. So, we subsidize one, penalize another. These are all solutions, Oliver, so I, I'm not short of solutions today. I just wasn't gonna go into them until you kinda called me out on them, right? You pulled me out on them, right? Now, you, I have to clarify one other thing for everybody listening, because you got me on the high-speed rail deal. When that project fails, remember that you heard it here first. That project is going to fail, and when it fails, please start thinking, "Oh, I wonder if Brandal was possibly right about affordable housing too." All right? Thank you, all right, I'm done.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back and just say this, out of all the solutions that you gave, um, you gave prevailing wage, right? So, that's a federal issue too. So, if you're willing to take on your president, I'm willing to take on the governor, about prevailing wage, we'll see if he repeals that, I doubt he will. Um, you talked about the, the, um, zero, the zero energy, so, you gotta, and we can do this offline, you can tell me why, that's a bad thing, you can tell me why it's bad to, to, to develop a, a, a house that has, uh, no energy, no significant energy footprint. I think that's a good thing, I think it, I think it actually lowers cost, uh, which in, in these homes are targeted at low-income people, doing things to lower their costs seems like it's consistent, but we can talk about offline on that. The LEED standard goes, feeds back into, um, what again is, uh, energy efficiency, which lowers costs for affordable, for, uh, uh, for, uh, poor people, so, I get your solutions. I don't know if, I think we would, we would differ on the relevancy. I think that if you are building affordable housing, and they are adding things in there to make the units, uh, more affordable, that's probably consistent. Uh, the prevailing wage has existed a long time before this governor, and the previous governor, and the previous governor, and the previous governor, both on the federal and presidential level, so I think both Republican and Democrat governors have supported the prevailing wage, but if you wanna get that removed at both levels, we can, we can discuss that. So, I appreciate you coming back with solutions. Uh, I, you, you, you got it, I'm, I'm gonna acknowledge that, and I did that on purpose because I know you have some, so, uh, but I appreciate that.
Mayor, I think you were punched up.
I wanna first say, uh, I really appreciate the comments by council colleagues, and I, and philosophically understand the, what you're, what we're all up against, but let me say a couple of things. There is, there were subsidized houses built at District Six when I moved to my house, so, they do go to greenfield areas too, two blocks away. The private sector model, the problem with it, and you say you could do it for, say, half the price, you know, two hundred thousand dollars, that includes the cost of the common area space too, is that, is the subsidized rents. If you drop the rents half, then the return on investment's like minimal, it's like one percent or nothing, so, that's what one of the major problems are, is in this whole model, is the subsidized rent. I agree with you, Steve, that this is not a solution, this is never gonna work as we go forward, and I think there's roughly eight thousand, eight hundred homes is the, the figure for City of Fresno, but what this is, this is the decision on December seventh, two thousand seventeen, that's gonna make the lives of about four hundred people better. This basically is a community investment, that's all I'm doing right now. There's a problem out there, we need to tackle. Um, one thing I can do probably from my position is through the, uh, the, they call it the big eleven, the top eleven cities' mayors, is work with the other mayors to hopefully get them, the mayors of Los Angeles, and Sacramento, and everywhere else, San Jose, to say, "Sacramento, this is not gonna work," because their, their problems are bigger than our problems, and maybe we can have some influence on trying to bring some sanity back into this system. Thank you.
The screen is clear at this time, and I'll make a, a couple of remarks. I think somebody up here said that everyone is right, I guess everyone is right. Um, I think that people on both...
You didn't say that.
I know you didn't say that. You know, but sitting here, you know, it's, it's difficult for me to sit still and be quiet, but today, I, I sat still and I was quiet, and, uh, I listened to everyone and, um, appreciate what everyone has to say, appreciate this agenda item, appreciate the discussion, uh, if you all bear with me, we'll, we'll try and get through this. First of all, Blackstone is not bad, Blackstone is not need, in need of any revitalization. Um, I am, after seven years of this, um, about sick and tired of reading in the Fresno Bee how tired, uh, and sad and disgusting Blackstone and the neighborhoods that are adjacent to Blackstone. Uh, I'm just fed up with hearing about how bad and undesirable they are. I live right off of Blackstone, at Clinton, uh, and I think in the Stadium Heights Housing Tract that I live in, which is, um, east of Blackstone and west of the forty-one, I think there, we check every so often, I think last time we checked, there were zero homes available, uh, for sale in that tract, um, between Shields to the north and Clinton to the south, I think now there might be two or three, right? We have a housing crisis, and those neighborhoods are in demand, and those neighborhoods are desirable, and there are, uh, tens of thousands of people who live in those neighborhoods, as I know that, uh, Mr. Berg told, can attest to, uh, vibrant neighborhoods with, um, a good mixture of working-class people and very wealthy people. Uh, if we look at, um, the Venice area, Fresno High area, we're talking about neighborhoods that are, uh, totally diverse, with all races, creeds, religions, lifestyles, income levels, um, and they all live off of Blackstone. So, if I have to read in the Fresno Bee one more time, uh, here's an authority that says the goal here is really to bring people back to living and working and shopping in central Fresno, and increasing the life and viability of this part of town. Tell you what, the part of town where I live, and the part of town where this project is going in, is absolutely packed. We have a, a few vacancies, uh, the old Pizza Hut, uh, near the project, uh, is vacant and blighted, and, and could probably use a, a new tenant and a facelift, uh, but the reality is, is that this statement is completely off the wall. Um, it provided a great opportunity to bring life back to central Fresno all along the Blackstone Quarter. So, this person is, that made this statement is obviously completely unaware that there are tens of thousands of people there, and just in the, to talk about the commerce that exists on Blackstone, uh, I would submit to you that the economic activity on Blackstone, uh, south of Ashland, uh, all the way to downtown, if, if it's not the top, uh, revenue generator in terms of sales tax and business tax, it's probably among, uh, the top three or four areas of our city in terms of generating, uh, sales tax and business tax. It's a vibrant, it's an alive, uh, it's a fantastic part of town to live and work, uh, and, um, this kind of nonsense, uh, it, it just, it just really makes me, um, it makes me sick. And so, it's becoming its own thing, it's becoming an urban legend, and it's becoming a myth in our city, but that's really all it is, uh, because, um, there are a lot of folks who are really, um, happy with their homes along Blackstone Avenue, and a lot of thriving businesses. Um, so, first of all, I wanna reject the whole idea that Blackstone is in need of transformation and that Blackstone is some bad place. Um, the reality is, is that we can keep our side of the street cleaner as a city, uh, we can do better in terms of, you know, curb, gutter, sidewalk, we can do better in terms of, uh, median islands, we can do better in terms of picking up, um, um, illegal dumping, and so there are things that we can do as a city, of course, in partnership with, uh, community groups like Better Blackstone, uh, in partnership with our residents who call us when they see things like illegal dumping, uh, there are things that we can do better. Uh, but I, I just wanted to begin my remarks by completely rejecting the, the whole notion that Blackstone is some kind of toilet that nobody wants to live in, because that's, that's absurd. Um, and I, I'm sorry that I had to read that in the newspaper. Uh, the next thing that I wanted to, um, address is the idea that, um, that this project, you know what, I'm not gonna talk about that. I have another article that, um, that I was able to pull up that addresses, this is from the San Jose Mercury News, it's called "California's Housing Crisis: It's Even Worse Than You Think." The state estimates it needs to build one hundred eighty thousand homes a year. This is market-rate housing, homes and apartments, condos. One hundred eighty thousand homes a year, just to keep up with the projection, the projected population growth and keep prices from escalating further out of control. Well, that's not happening. They aren't building one hundred and eighty thousand homes a year in the state of California, um, and, and the reasons for that are debatable, but really, um, the government of the state of California, and municipalities and counties, and NIMBY groups have stood in the way over and over and over and continually of, um, of developers, market-rate developers who wish to build, uh, housing for people in the state of California to keep up with the demand, demand of people moving into the state from other states, demand for, uh, young people who are finishing high school and college, uh, and need, in need of housing. So, the state is not keeping up with that. Uh, unfortunately, I think it's the state government that, that is to blame, uh, and other levels of government that are to blame, because there, there should be, um, anyway. And then people, um, it says, "There's fierce debate over how long it takes low-income residents to benefit from the construction of new market-rate housing," which means they build some new homes, uh, people move into those, and then the older homes become available for people to live in. Obviously, it's gonna be at a lower rent or mortgage, uh, than, uh, the newer homes. So, the, the reality is, is that we have a, a state government, you know, I, I've always liked to say this, uh, little saying, that the government is the first ones to come in and break your legs, and then give you a crutch, and say, "See, if it weren't for us, you couldn't walk." And nowhere is that more in evidence than with the housing problem. The housing problem that the state of California and the geniuses in Sacramento make it difficult for market-rate to construct housing, and then, they, they do things like this project, cap and trade, raising taxes, all these kinds of programs, that they has to be, "Well, we've got this housing crisis, we have to build affordable housing, we have to build socialized housing to keep up with the need for housing." Well, there's a need for housing because they won't let them build housing. So, it's, it's, uh, an awful cycle, and yeah, I agree, Oliver said it, and Steve said it, that the answer is, we have to go to Sacramento, and we have to change, uh, viewpoints, and we have to change maybe some of our elected officials, so that we can, um, there, there's nothing we can do. At this point, it's an avalanche. Somebody said, "We need twenty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-eight affordable housing units in the next ten years in the City of Fresno? Two thousand, two hundred a year needed? Forget about it, it's never gonna happen." This, this crisis is gonna go on and on, I'm outta here in twelve months, folks, and then this is gonna go on and on, way beyond any of the time that, that we're in public service, and, and I don't really see a fix to it. And in, in, in closing, this is what I'll say. The government, the governments, including Sacramento, uh, and the federal government, and the local governments, are making people poorer. There's nobody on this dais that looks at the gas pump when we fill up. We stick the thing in the tank, and we pull the, the trigger, the nozzle, and we fill up our tank, and we talk on the cellphone, and we watch a little video that plays in the gas pump, and then we put the thing back and we move on, okay? But my constituents, who live in nine-three-seven-zero-three, who have an, who have a median household income of twenty-six thousand dollars a year, the people that this project is designed to help, they do look at the gas tank, okay? And so, twelve cents a gallon is a lot of money when you're choosing between gas and groceries. And so, this is how the state of California, and the local governments, and the federal governments squeeze my neighbors, okay? They pay twelve cents extra a gallon, they're already, what's the gas on a gallon, and the tax on a gallon? Fifty-six, sixty-six cents a gallon? And it's going up, twelve cents, okay? And then they put transportation fuels under cap and trade. Well, that's gonna raise the price of transportation fuels. They put other industries under cap and trade, so when industries have to ship things to the market, there's an increased cost. These companies don't care, they cut the check, which is why these big companies supported cap and trade, when it went through the state legislature, because they pass it on to people. Who does it affect? Doesn't affect me, I'm blessed with this job. Doesn't affect anybody on this dais, but it affects our constituents, the people that I represent. So, then they increase the vehicle license fee, so the vehicle license fee goes up, the price of gasoline goes up, the price of products at the cash register goes up. We passed a general plan that's trying to create scarcity in housing, even more scarcity. Scarcity causes things to become more expensive. Doesn't matter, I can get a, 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 I have two working people in my home, myself and my wife, we're blessed, we can go out and get a more expensive home, we can afford it when rent goes up, we can afford it when mortgage goes up, we can afford it when gas goes up, but the people I represent cannot. So, the scarcity causes everything to go up, the taxes and all these regulations cost, cause the cost of things to go up, and when you're making twenty-six thousand dollars a year as a household, you really, really feel it, and you're choosing between gas and groceries. And somebody gets a bright idea, they increase other fees within the city, that thank goodness have not come to fruition. So, who gets squeezed? It's the, it's the poor people get squeezed. We break their legs, and then we say, "Hey, look, I've got this shiny, wonderful apartment for you to live in, we're gonna reduce the rent for you," and the cycle goes on and on and on and on and on. So, the people I represent are tired of being squeezed, but you know what, if they're gonna be squeezed, and they're gonna be taxed, and this money's gonna be, uh, taken from them by force, and this project comes and drops in and says, "I wanna put thirty-eight million dollars in, in economic investment," which is taxpayers' money, whether we agree on cap and trade or not, somebody's paying for that, and it's the people in my district. This thing drops out of the sky, this shiny building with free bicycles and everything else, the bells and whistles that you guys are gonna do in there, and I'm supposed to say, which I detest, this entire stinky, rotten system that we have in the state of California. But this thing's gonna drop out of the sky, and these guys are gonna build it, and it's gonna be fantastic, and then I'm supposed to vote no on it, because I object to it, which I do, I object to the entire process. I object to the fact they won't let us build housing, and then I create scarcity, and then I object to the fact that, um, you know, we have to build government-socialized housing to accommodate the people that are getting squeezed, okay? So, then this thing's gonna come, and I'm supposed to vote no on it. Well, if the constituents have already paid for this thing, so where do I wanna put the big, shiny building with the free bicycles? Downey? Stockton? Buena Park? Modesto? Should they get the Lingo's Building in Modesto? Well, no, it's a no-brainer, I have to vote for this. I have to vote for this, because this has to go in my district, well, across the street from my district, and then they sweeten the pot by offering two-and-a-half million dollars for infrastructure repairs in my district, and I go, "Well, gosh, my constituents, their sidewalks are all broken up by old trees, may as well take the money and get it fixed." So, these kinds of things, I agree, they, with, with Steve and Gary, um, they absolutely stink, and, uh, it's, it's the same thing, it's with Fulton Mall, "Well, it's all federal money, it's all state money, you know, once we pave the street through, then we're gonna have all kinds of microbrews and economic investment." Whatever, I had to take the money, right? Because otherwise, it goes to, to Lexington, Kentucky. This is what happens, it's funny, but some of you in here I know are running for city council, hey, get ready for it, because you're gonna do eight years of the same exact thing, scratching your head on these goofy projects that come forward, but the, I think for me, my final decision is gonna be, should the people who live in District Seven benefit from forty million dollars of investment, it's probably partly their money anyway? And the answer is simple, the answer for me is yes. So, uh, I will vote for this thing, and I will join you, Oliver, in the halls of the state legislature to repeal these goofy housing and environmental laws, and let the free market construct housing for our people. No, I'm serious.
I'm serious.
All right, because we're both retiring at the same time. So, there you go. Um, so with that, um, we'll just go ahead and vote. I would like to, um, break the vote into three parts. Can you explain how that goes? Um, right now, it's all, I could take it as one, or I could take it as three, right? There's the, eh, eh, explain how, how that works, please.
We have four sub-items. Uh, Items One and Four require...
Items one and four require four votes, items two and three require five votes to pass. You, you may split the vote and vote on each one individually.
One and four require four votes? And one and three?
One and four require four votes, two and three require five votes.
And two and three require five votes?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One through three require five votes.
One through three require five votes, and the fourth part of it requires four votes.
That's correct.
Is that, that is correct, right?
Yes.
All right, let's go. The, the first vote will be on items one through three. Let's vote electronically, please. Doug, can you briefly go over what items one through three are?
Item one is an inter-fund loan agreement between the general fund, I'm sorry, it's between FACS now, and the Low-Mod Income Housing Fund. That requires five votes and is subject to veto. Items two and three are appropriations to fund the loans and the grant.
And number four?
Item four is the amendment to the owner participation agreement that was approved back in two thousand sixteen.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on items one through three, please. Vote electronically, cast your votes. Motion carries five yes, two no, and on four out of four? This is the fourth, no, this, that was one through three together, and this is the fourth part? There's somebody that hasn't voted yet. Motion carries four yes, three no. Thank you, counsel. We have?
Do we have, did we do B? We have the remaining B item.
The remaining what?
The item immediately after this, the resolution concerning the designations for conflicts of interest. It's under the joint meeting. The joint meeting, item B, I don't know if it requires a presentation, it's just approving conflicts of interest listed.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a second by Member Brattifell. The screen is clear, is there any opposition to this?
Any public comment?
I have to go out to the public, is there anyone who wishes to comment on this item? Okay, closed public comment, is there any opposition to this item? Thank you, counsel.